Good evening and welcome to the January 18th, 2023, meeting of the Lower Marion Board of Commissioners. We have four meetings this evening. We have a Finance Committee meeting, we have a Police Committee meeting, Administrative and Human Resources Committee meeting, and a Board of Commissioners meeting. So the usual announcements before we start, please silence your cell phones. There is equipment for the hearing impaired available if needed. And when the floor is open for public comment, we're going to first take comment always from people who are present in the room. There are a number of attendees on Zoom tonight. They will, the virtual attendees will be able to comment second. If you are in the room, we're going to ask that you use this podium here. And it is important that you speak directly into the microphone and close to the microphone for us to be able to hear you. For those on Zoom, if you wish to make comment during the appropriate times of the meeting, we're going to ask that you raise your virtual hand in the Zoom meeting, and the Township Secretary will promote you into the meeting when it's time to speak. And we're going to ask people to make sure to introduce themselves or their name and where, you know, in the township they live at the beginning of their comments. Finally, if you are here to comment on the Police Committee meeting about the investigation of the January 8th car stop and use of force incident, we're going to do that during the Police Committee meeting. Later tonight, we have a Board of Commissioners meeting. You're eligible to make comments during that time if you want, but it's just better for all of us to do the comments at the same time earlier in the meeting, which is the Police Committee, which is a committee immediately after the Finance Committee. That committee is a short agenda tonight. Also during that Police Committee meeting, that superintendent's report in the discussion of the use of force incident will be at the beginning of that meeting. That'll be the time for that. So with that, we're going to turn to the First Order Business tonight, which is the Finance Committee meeting. I recognize its Chair, Commissioner Zeloff.
Thank you, President Sinai. There are four items on tonight's Finance Committee agenda. We'll start with the first one, which is for the committee to consider what is a routine transaction, which is transmitting the 2023 real estate tax bills to the tax collector. And to explain it in additional detail, I'll call on Eric Traub, who is our Chief Financial Officer. Eric?
Thank you, Commissioner Zeloff. This is an annual item that we must complete in order to be in accordance with the First Class Township Code. Our estimate for the overall township's assessed value was within $700,000, or less than one hundredth of one percent of what we had budgeted. So the difference between what we expect to collect and what we budgeted is basically $2,700. So we're pretty on point with that. Overall assessed value growth you see is about 0.44%. That's pretty positive. And we recommend the board move forward on this item. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Eric. $2,700 on a collection of real estate taxes that exceeds $30 million is pretty good. Thank you for that. There is no, in case you don't know, there is no increase in our 2023 real estate taxes for the Township of Lower Marion. And this is transmitting the tax duplicates to the tax collector. Eric did mention our assessed value. The current common level ratio is 2.5. So in order to determine market value, you would take your assessed value and multiply it by 2.5. The assessed value has not been changed in a long, long time in Montgomery County. Are there any committee members who have any questions or comments? Seeing none, are there any members of the public either in the room or online? Jody, you have any questions or comments on this item?
I don't have any answers.
Therefore, I will move that the committee, the Finance Committee recommended the Board of Commissioners approval that authorizes the proper township officers to transmit to the tax collector the 2023 duplicate of the assessment of township taxes at the rate of 4.19 mils, together with their warrant for collection pursuant to Section 1712 of the First Class Township Code. Do I have a second? Commissioner O'Neill, seconds. All those in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? Any abstentions? One abstention. Madam Secretary, that motion carries unanimously with one abstention from Commissioner Gilbert Kramer. Second item on our Finance Committee agenda tonight is for the approval of appointments to the bid opening committee. Eric, anything you'd like to add on this item?
So again, another administrative action, this time to stay in compliance with the Township's code. The committee historically is always composed of a mix of township staff and those members of the Finance Committee. The bids are really opened all electronically now, and all the information really is automatically communicated out to the bidding community. So it's kind of a relic of the way we used to do things in the world, but still something we need to do to stay in accordance with the code and recommend moving forward.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Eric on this item that is, will keep us in compliant with state code for first-class townships? Are there any members of the public, either in the room or online, who have any questions or comments on this item? Seeing or hearing of none, I'll move that the Finance Committee recommend to the Board of Commissioners approval of the appointment of the following persons to the bid opening committee of the Township of Lower Marion effective January 1st, 2023, pursuant to the Code of the Township of Lower Marion, Chapter 5, Article 11, Section 5-70, V. Scott Zeloff, Eric Traub, and Jody Kelly, with alternates Ray Courtney, Sean Whalen, Laurie Jennings, and Christopher Weldy. Do I have a second?
You do.
Commissioner Bernheim seconds the motion. All those in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Madam Secretary, that item carries unanimously. Our third item tonight for the Finance Committee's consideration is for appropriations to our volunteer fire companies, of which there are six. And we're doing this because we, at our meeting at the end of December, we passed our 2023 budget. And in that budget, we approved an allocation to each of our six fire companies in support of their, the work they do that protects our lives and our property. Eric, you want to tell us some more?
Yep. So this is the third annual January item for the Finance Committee to formally approve the various payments to the volunteer fire companies as approved in the budget. The main one is the annual allocation, which we pay out quarterly, and also reimbursements of workers' compensation and internet costs. Happy to answer any questions, but recommend approving as it was part of the adopted budget.
I'll take this opportunity to mention that earlier today, many commissioners were in attendance at the Belmont Hills Fire Company, in which, led by State Representative Mary Jo Daly, we recognized a fallen firefighter, Thomas Royds, and a replica of a sign was there. And that sign has been posted on a section of the Schoolkill Expressway between Belmont Hills and Gladwin that names it the Thomas Royds Way on the expressway in honor of him and in memory of him for his service and his passing while on duty as a volunteer firefighter in Lower Marion Township. So, and also, we can never say enough that even though we are, the township contributes to each and every one of our six volunteer fire companies, we encourage our community to also contribute when asked and where it's possible to support our volunteer fire service. With that, do any members of the committee have any questions or comments? Do any members of the public have any questions or comments?
Joseph Abramson, Ballackinwood. I have no problem with the amounts or, you know, the budget, but my question is, for the amounts, are they equal or equitable? You know, we have six different fire companies with six different needs within those fire companies. And I'm just wondering if we have where the money goes. You know, I'm sure some of it goes to equipment, some of it goes to other ancillary costs, but it would be good, you know, for those fire companies that need it more to get more. And we need equitable rather than equal, which it may be, but I'm just curious to know how we allocate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Abramson. Any other members of the public with any questions or comments? Jody, online?
No.
In response to Mr. Abramson, the allocation that we're voting on is an equal amount for all six fire companies. The Fire Committee has discussed at times the appropriateness of doing so. We continue to believe that's the right thing. We do get annual financial statements in a consistent format now from each of our six fire companies. And it is how we contribute to them is something that we periodically discuss. I'll ask our manager if he wants to add anything to that.
No, you've said it well.
Thank you very much. Any other comments on the public comment? Seeing none, I will move that the Finance Committee recommend to the Board of Commissioners the adoption of the attached resolution authorizing payments of the annual appropriations in the amount of $368,366 for each of the six volunteer fire companies. Do I have a second? I do, from Commissioner Bernheim. All those in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Madam Secretary, that carries unanimously. The final item on our Finance Committee agenda for tonight is for another resolution in which we would enter into a grant application jointly with Upper Marion Township on recycling with the State Department of Environmental Protection. Eric, can you tell us more?
Yeah, so this is a new item before this board. So historically, the township gets DEP grant revenue for recycling performance grants into its solid waste fund. We use an outside consultant that manages this process, and they do this for a large number of communities in this area. And it's helpful because they have relationship with all the commercial haulers and recyclers and are very much able to get data from them, which helps drive up our recycling numbers and eventually our grant awards. So they brought this to our attention because of some changes in the DEP regulations in terms of the way that they are worded right now in terms of, we would benefit financially by being basically as part of a pool and having a larger amount in our grant application. It's something that they've done in other areas and other communities in southeastern PA. It makes sense both financially and administratively for the township. It also makes sense for Upper Marion Township. We're obviously adjoining. We use the same consultant. A lot of the same commercial waste haulers work in the area. So it's something that, from our perspective, makes a lot of sense for right now. It's also something that we have built in the flexibility. If DEP changes their regulations or for whatever reason, we believe this is not in our financial or administrative best interest, that we can go back to doing these awards solely on the basis of the township's information. As you have in the issue briefing before you, we expect, because of doing this joint application, we'll receive a little over $15,000 in additional grant revenue than we would have if we did this solely by ourselves. Upper Marion would also receive some additional funds as opposed to if they went out on it by themselves. The township will be the, as the larger volume will be the grant holder, so we would receive the grant and then distribute the money back to Upper Marion Township. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Eric. Do any committee members have any questions for Eric or any comments on this item? Seeing none, do any members of the public have any questions or comments on this item? Jody, is there any indication that anyone online has any questions or comments? Okay. Therefore, I'll move that the Finance Committee recommend to the Board of Commissioners adoption of the attached resolution authorizing a joint application with Upper Marion Township for Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection recycling performance grants. Do I have a second? Commissioner Whalen, seconds. The motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Madam Secretary, that item also passes unanimously. President Sinai, that completes the business of the Finance Committee for this evening.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Zeloff. So our next meeting is the Police Committee meeting. Since some people have walked in since I previously mentioned this, before I turn the floor over to Commissioner McComb, I want to remind everyone that we're going to take that agenda a little out of sequence and start with the third item on that agenda, which is the update from our Superintendent of Police on the investigation of the January 18th car stop in use of force. I'd also like to request that anyone who's in the room who, or on Zoom, who wants to address the board on this topic, we're going to do it this portion of tonight's meeting rather than in a later portion of tonight's meeting as well. So with that, we're going to turn to the Police Committee meeting, and I recognize its Chair, Commissioner McComb.
Thank you, President Sinai. We have three items on the Police Committee agenda tonight. As President Sinai stated, there are a number of members of the public who are interested in hearing the update from our Superintendent of Police. So we're going to move that to the front of the agenda. We'll be hearing from that item, on that item first. Following the presentation by Superintendent McGrath, there'll be an opportunity for public comment. Those who wish to give public comment should address the group from the podium to my right. Those who are online can raise their virtual hand, and our Township Secretary will admit them. Typically, after public comment, the board and staff respond to that public comment. We have received notice today from our outside counsel of an intent by the motorists to file lawsuit against the township. On the advice of counsel, we probably will not be getting into much substantive response to public comment, but nobody should misunderstand and suggest that we're not interested. We're all interested in this issue. It's just the advice of counsel that as a matter of policy, we don't comment on a matter that is going to litigation. So I hope you keep that in mind as the night progresses. Superintendent McGrath?
Thank you, Commissioner. On June 8th, a traffic stop and subsequent arrest occurred in the Ballackinwood section of the township. The arrest and force used during the incident has been widely reported and drawn significant attention due to the force that was applied during that incident. Many have seen snippets of the video of the arrest recorded by bystanders. I want to first say that the use of force by police is rightfully looked at with a critical eye by the public, by the media, and anybody concerned about the fair and equitable treatment during police citizen encounters. It's important that you know that it is also viewed with a critical eye by the law enforcement community. We do this not because it's our job, but because we care about the people we protect and who we serve. We also care about their safety and the safety of the officers as well. We are keenly aware of the issues of procedural justice, equity in policing, and the fair and even application of a law. For all is necessary conversation police leaders need to have with our communities. With that in mind, we are here to provide a full and complete review and analysis of the incident from its initiation to its end. We'll be pointing out those areas where procedures were properly followed, and just as important, those areas where we performed poorly. The video recordings of the incident will now be shown along with the summary of the timeline of the stop and the arrest. I would caution everyone that what you're about to see contains foul language and violence and may not be suitable for minors. So this is the timeline. This is the primary officer in car camera, just to give you an idea what to look for, look to during the showing of the video. Video begins at 1:12 in the afternoon on Contraican State Road near Fairview Road. At the minute mark of that video, the emergency lights are activated. If you see it clearly on the screen, you'll actually be able to see at the bottom of the screen a light indicating when the emergency lights turn on. At 18 seconds later, after the manual siren is utilized to get the attention of the vehicle in front of them, vehicles, there's actually two vehicles pulled to the side of the road just temporarily. At the 2:05 mark, siren is fully utilized in continuous mode. At the 3:29 mark, Volvo pulls into the service station to Volvo parking lot on Contraican State Road at Rock Hill Road. At 3:50, primary officer approaches Volvo. You'll see handgun is down by his right side. At 4:35, the handgun is re-holstered. It is never raised or pointed at anyone during the stop. At 5:44, the first backup officers arrive. And at the 8:01 mark, primary officer opens the Volvo door. You also see the backup officer's body worn camera. At the 1:20 mark on that video, primary officer opens the Volvo door, begins empty-handed physical struggle, begins there. At 1:49, primary officer disengages from that struggle and draws a taser. At the 2:00 mark, after warnings are given, the taser probes are deployed. At 2:41, after the ineffective taser, use of the taser, the physical struggle resumes with multiple officers, and the driver is removed from the Volvo. At the 3:27 mark, after struggle continues outside the Volvo, the driver is finally handcuffed. This is just durations that occur during the incident, just an overview of that. So the vehicle pursuit itself lasts 2 minutes and 29 seconds. That's when initially the emergency lights go on until you get to the parking lot. The primary officer's gun is at his side for 45 seconds. Primary officer engages the driver for just over four minutes prior to opening the door. The driver struggles and resists the empty-hand controls for 29 seconds. Primary officer then warns of the taser deployment for 10 seconds prior to deploying it. The driver struggles with the officers for another 41 seconds while inside the Volvo, and then 46 seconds outside the Volvo before the handcuffing occurs. The entire struggle from the opening of the door to handcuffing lasts 2 minutes, 7 seconds. The subject's physical and verbal resistance continues beyond handcuffing. And this is just an overview of where this incident began to where it ends. As I noted just a moment ago, it begins, it's first seen on Contraican State Road near Fairview, Fairhill. It continues eastbound. You can see on the map here, emergency lights are activated. Then the sirens activated, the third arrow, the fourth arrow, the sedan and truck pull over, continues for a distance to the fifth arrow. We see the truck pulls over. The sedan accelerates past the truck, gets down to the gully run area. We make a left turn to stay on Contraican State Road. An SUV in front of the vehicle pulls over. The sedan continues and then stops at the location we mentioned. So this is the first in-car camera. You won't hear any, anything as far as audio goes beginning because the lights aren't on, it's just on patrol. And if you, if the audience can't see it, you can see circles at the bottom showing when the microphone's on, lights are on, siren or bricks are flying. Now the lights have been turned on. Car is now pulled to the right side of the road. And as you can see, pulling away now. Siren is, was just initiated. Now the siren is fully on. And the vehicle has just gone around the first vehicle. Excuse the technical difficulties. This is the approach to the parking lot. PIO will attempt to get the audio functioning over at her station. The next is, we'll go to, you can see the video portion in the lot, and see the beginning of the stop. In the lot, and see the beginning of the stop.
We don't have any sound up here on the road at all. Yeah. I did throw it all the way up.
At this point, additional officers arriving in the next segment will get a better view of what's taking place. At this point, I hope the audio is working. This is the second officer on scene on the other side where you saw the first officer. And it is not producing audio at the moment, so I will pause it.
Lori, can we pipe in a replay from last evening's press conference where it worked?
It was working earlier today.
Yeah, we checked it like an hour ago.
Well, you could play it.
Just play from last evening.
Play it, play it on the, on the.
Raise the technical goals. Technical, got a lot of technology.
Just going to tell you from, pick it up from your audio. And it worked earlier?
Mm-hmm. We tested it, just performs fine.
Play, play the YouTube audio, just play yesterday's link.
Yeah, I, let's look it up. Figure it out.
Good job, Lori.
Your slides degree is. I did mention that my DCLM questionnaire.
I never saw that.
AB2 extraordinary.
Share the audio. Zoom will cut it if you don't take it.
Zoom is wonderful.
I want to see your buddy.
You're right, your buddy's getting out.
That's the Dallas school stuff.
You don't, you don't decide.
We have nobody there.
I'm gonna break your window. Step out, step out of the vehicle. Step out of the vehicle. Step out of the vehicle. I'm gonna break the window, I'm gonna break the window. Step out of the car, step out of the car. Step out of the car. You don't decide. You're in the car now.
Let's conclude, you know, this one. And the last one.
Get out, get out, get out. If you don't, I'm gonna break that window, I'm gonna break the window. Step out of the car, step out of the car. Step out of the car. Step out of the car. You don't decide. You don't decide. You don't decide. Step out of the car now. Step out of the car now. I don't care. Step out of the car. With your fucking, get me a white shirt here now. I will not relax. He has my money. Three even later, I'm gonna take. I'm gonna, I'm gonna take, yeah, fucking touch me. He didn't shop for me. He has got one at me. All right. Because it wasn't safe for me to pull over. If I pull over, I get to a parking lot. It's 23. Okay. I'm not, I'm not even, give me a white shirt here. Sergeant's on the way. Call my dad, my dad, a trooper. No, you don't got it, no, no. I got it, yeah. I'm gonna break the window. You put that window down now. I'm gonna break the window now. You are not gonna put that window up. I don't care, you, I don't care what you do. No. Get out of my car. Get out of my car. Get out of the car. You're under arrest. You're under arrest. Don't touch me. Yes, you are. Don't touch me. That's under arrest. Yes, you are. Stop, 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 stop. Everybody get a lap, let's go. Relax, relax. Step out of the car. Step, step out of the car. You're under arrest. You're under arrest, I'm trying to justice. I know, sir. Because it's not, yo, you the fuck, relax. I told you, do not touch me until your sergeant gets here. You told me and you better not. Break the taser. No. Step out of the car. My dad's a sheriff. Step out of the car. Not fucking touching me. Everybody step out of the car. Ah! 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 Step out of the car. Yeah? Step out of the car. Oh! No! No! You just walk. Step out of the car. Step out of the car. You gotta get out of the car, you gotta get out of the car. Step out of the car. Come out, come out, come out, come out. Just come out. Come out. Now I know, he takes off with his fucking gun. Relax. Get off of me! Get off of me! Enough! Get off of me! Get off of me! Get off of me! Don't fucking touch me! I got it. All right, you're good. Stop, stop. Break my thing, bro. No, you get into my car with your fucking gun. I'm gonna watch and see you pull over. If I pull the fuck over, no! No! Come on. Ah! 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 I have a fucking sergeant! Right now, I'm in close. You're not in close. Hold on. Get the fuck off of me! And I will not do nothing until my sergeant, the sergeant gets the car here. Get the fuck off of me, I'm coming, I said it. I'm gonna fight the fuck now. Are you fucking kidding me? She's gotta sit in the car, right? I'm not doing shit. I asked for a fucking white shirt, he don't tell me. Don't fucking fucking touch me! Don't you put me in here, fuck off! I don't do this, I'm fucking tired. Just walk. All I got to do is walk, just walk. You doing all this shit up there? No, don't do this, I'm going to fuck up my car with a fucking gun.
So some key facts. Driver states on the video several times that she did not feel she was safe to stop on 23. At one point, she mentioned the many turns. Over the course of the 1.3 mile pursuit, Volvo passes multiple residential side streets, wide driveways, cutouts, wayfinder sign for the nearby library, and a highly traveled intersection with a cutout, which begins a new travel lane at the Contraican State Road at Manny Up Road. Multiple unbought vehicles traveling in both directions are seen on the video moving and pulling over to the side. The driver was operating on a suspended driver's license. All of Volvo's windows were heavily tinted. The front passenger refused to put down his window. A third passenger in the backseat remained undetected for much of the incident by the officers due to the tinting. Upon the arrival of the first backup officer, an ambulance was summoned, summons to scene for one of the Volvo passengers. As the driver had claimed that the passenger needed to go to the hospital, the passenger later declined any medical assistance. Then proper post-incident care was provided to the driver after she was arrested. How the incident escalated in, in sequence. The driver failed to yield to police signals for a significant distance while bypassing several safe locations. That is fleeing, looting, and misdemeanor arrestable in Pennsylvania. Once stopped, the driver and the occupants refused to fully lower the heavily tinted windows. For over four minutes, the driver refused multiple demands for identification and paperwork, that is a requirement under Pennsylvania law, and eventual commands to exit the vehicle. The driver escalated situation by screaming profanities and an intent to resist all instructions. The driver attempted to put a window fully up and the officer responded by reaching in and opening the door. Continuously defined verbal commands to comply and exit, the driver resisted the officer when he grabbed at her and to pull her out of the vehicle. The driver yelled, flailed, and pulled away resisting arrest. The officer disengaged from this ineffective hands-on control and then transitioned to drawing his taser. The officer provided commands and a warning prior to deploying that taser. The initial taser cycle had a very brief effect, if any, so the officer initiated a second cycle. I think you should note here, the use of taser was developed over two decades ago to try to provide a tool where you would not have to use excessive or additional physical force to take an uncompliant resisting person in control. It should immobilize person for momentarily so that you can get them under control and handcuff them. The second cycle had no effect indicating that one or both of the probes did not make sufficient contact. The officer activated the taser two more times by applying brief, direct contact with the tip of the taser. This is another way that would, should deliver an appropriate shock to get that immobilization that was ineffective. The officer then abandoned that option and transitioned back to control and controls. The physical struggle resumed inside the Volvo with the assistance of a second officer. The driver was pulled from the vehicle. Third officer joined the struggle, which continued outside the Volvo. The driver was finally handcuffed, but it took three officers to walk the still combative driver over to the police car. So findings, conclusions. Were the officer's actions legal? Yes. Police have the legal authority to require paperwork for traffic violations and have the authority to order the driver or occupants out of the car. This was, you know, in this particular situation with having no visibility in the interior car, this is for everybody's safety. The officer had probable cause to arrest the driver for fleeing and eluding police. The empty hand physical controls are a proper response for non-compliance to verbal commands. The proper, the taser is a proper response to active physical resistance. The officer gave constant verbal commands and transitioned to other methods when his efforts were ineffective. The next question is, did we meet lower margin police standards and did we follow policy and training? No. The officer did not follow best practices for de-escalation. There were additional policy infractions and deviations from training. The officer's body worn camera was not properly logged and synced in with his in-car camera system and required a standard, which is a required standard practice at the beginning of each tour duty. Therefore, his body worn camera did not activate with the system when the lights turn on. As a result, there are approximately 2 minutes 25 seconds of the interaction that does not have direct body worn camera audio. The officer's in-car camera does record video of this segment and does have some distant microphone audio. The officer did not use sound tactics, which would have mitigated the risk to the officer and the urgency to act. The officer, officer could have waited behind the cover of his patrol car for backup units. From there, he could have also used APA system to give initial commands or instructions. As an example, put your windows down. Best practices for de-escalation were not followed. At times, some actions could have inflamed the situation. Immediately and without backup, he approached the car with his handgun out, by his side, not pointing at anybody. Sternly denying the driver's request for supervisor, you don't decide that? Backup officer was calling for the supervisor, they weren't around. The overall strict authoritative style and approach was not best practice. Not allowing a backup officer to try to calm the situation, which he was attempting to do. And occupy, this is just tactically not smart, but having something in your hands, in this case handcuffs, you know, in order to somebody out of the car is not a good way of handling that. So question, you know, we're talking about the escalation here, some considerations and the things we go over as far as evaluation and training. Is it safe to use the escalation? Is it feasible in the particular situation you're encountering? So the officers, the, the officers, plural, were facing an unknown risk. The pursuit, non-compliance, and inability to see into the car were all concerning and red flags. However, better tactics could have improved the circumstances. Is the subject engaged? In other words, is the person you encountering, are they listening to you or are they actually recognizing there's, you know, an interaction going on? Yes, there was interaction, but she was extremely uncooperative and agitated. And then, can I stabilize the situation with de-escalation? Some effort beyond strict commands should have been attempted. However, there was no guarantee that the escalation would have been successful. So if the answer is yes, you can use the escalation, you use it, proceed with it. If the answer is no, you end the interaction without aggravating things and putting yourself or others in harm's way. you end the interaction without aggravating things and putting yourself or others in harm's way. Or if there's reasonable suspicion or probable cause exists and force will be used to pat down, to make the arrest and search. So, what are the next steps? For the officer, the formal disciplinary process will be finalized. This involves following employment law due process steps. Recommendation to Board of Commissioners occurs. The Board of Commissioners, in a public meeting, vote on that recommendation. Additional training and policy review to learn from identifying deficiencies are already ongoing and will continue. For the driver, charges have been filed via criminal summons. The charges are listed there. They are violations of the Crimes Code, the Controlled Substance Drug Device and Cosmetic Act and the Vehicle Code. They include fleeing and attempting to elude police officer, misdemeanor, resisting arrest or other law enforcement, also misdemeanor. Possession of a controlled substance, misdemeanor, or possession of drug paraphernalia, misdemeanor. Following too closely, which was the start of this summary. Driving while operating privileges is suspended or revoked, summary. Unlawful activities that relates to the window tint and then investigation by police, which simply means failing to exhibit documents on demand. This is just an example of, you know, diagram, the use of escalational force model, which is part of a, you know, an extensive use of force policy. And I will note that Lower Marion Township policies are online and have been for years. Anybody would like to access them and take a look at the different rules and regulations that apply, including the use of force policy. And here, and it's hard for, you know, the layman to look at it, quite grasp what it says. But what it shows is on the left side that you look at the level of threat. You look at the bottom to see what is an appropriate response to that level of threat. And obviously, threats can go up and down during the course of an encounter. Start at a certain level, may not be the lowest or the highest, and can change, as I just said, at any time. You see what you should do, give verbal instructions at the lower level. Then, when you get into a situation where the person does not comply or raises above that to they actively resist, you go to the light, physical contact and control attempts. And if that's not working, you then have other tools so that you don't have to get into a major struggle and injure people. And that is potentially pepper spray or a taser. As I said at the beginning, we are keenly aware of the attention and scrutiny that results from incidents involving police civilian encounters that involve use of force. In the past, the main focus of the examination of the use of force was limited to determining if the force used was legally justifiable at the moment and under the specific circumstances encountered. This ignores the community's perspective and expectations of our society. The lens that these situations should be looked at is through multiple viewpoints. But the main goal is to determine if it's avoidable. With the goal of avoiding the avoidable, we in law enforcement now look backwards from the moment the force was used and honestly assess whether our actions or lack of actions contributed to the ultimate outcome. With that in mind, this incident was extensively reviewed and analyzed to determine not only where the actions taken were consistent with policy and procedures, but also whether the actions taken followed the best practices and training provided on pursuit and use of force. The previous slides provided context and facts that were not available previously. Based on the full picture and all available facts, the following observations and conclusions were drawn. The traffic stop was initiated due to the observed operation of the car following another vehicle too closely. This was first observed about a mile prior to the stop location. The driver of the Volvo had yielded once to the signal to stop for the officer, but then drove away. She also drove around the truck that was following, she was following during the ensuing pursuit. After stopping in the parking lot, she refused to provide her driver's license or cooperate with a legitimate stop. Those are the facts that are being provided to give a fuller context to what then transpired. We presented these videos not to be defensive or cast a poor light on the driver, but to provide the public with transparency. That is necessary for us to have so we can have conversations that are needed to relate to police and citizen encounters and fair and equitable policing. As noted, we could have performed better and we should have. Our policy development for years has focused on constant improvement. Our training is consistently updated to reflect lessons learned from past incidents, not just locally, but nationally. We'll be taking these lessons learned from this incident to focus on several factors in training such as handling stressful encounters at pivotal moments. The overall goal on how stress may divert from the mission. Slowing things down can be your most powerful tactic. How tactics contribute to the need to use force and a hard look for the reasons mistakes are made and the benefit of mid-event disengagement. Commissioners, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Superintendent, we'll now open the floor for public comment. Each person who wants to speak will be given three minutes. I would ask that they speak from the podium to my right. I would like to make just some general comments. Tonight, we're not deciding or adjudicating anything. You know, the guilt or innocence of the motorist is not something we can decide. It would be inappropriate for us as a board to do anything. The criminal justice system, she's been charged. That she has rights in the criminal justice system. Whether she's guilty or not guilty, whether she should have pulled over, whether she, you know, had her reason not to, that is for the courts to decide. That's not our business. Likewise, any discipline as to the police officer is not presently before us. He has rights under Pennsylvania law and under federal constitutional law for due process, which means he has a right to get notice of any charges against him, to be, to have to be present at a hearing in which there's some determination and so forth. So, that's not before us. Now, you're free to comment on anything that you wish to comment on and we welcome those comments because it's helpful. But to the extent it's sort of, I don't think she did anything wrong, that's really not something that's gonna, that this board is gonna be able to do anything about. So, having said that, anyone who wants to speak is free to come up to the podium. I would just ask you, state your name and where you're from.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Brian Reese Turner. I'm the president of the Mainline Branch of the NBLACCP. After viewing the video this evening, I just have to say that I'm disturbed by what I saw. My biggest concern is not necessarily how everything has, what you guys have found with the victim, is her civil rights. I feel that her civil rights were violated. I feel that Lower Marion being the first-class township that it claims to be is better than what I saw in that video. I really do think that there needs to be an independent investigation into what led to this type of behavior happening. There were words used that I just heard in terms of someone being stressed. I want to see the entire video when I edit it. I would like to see what happened, which transpired before while the cop was approaching the woman's vehicle. What words were stated to her to have her react in that way? There was a gun. She, I feel that she was fearful for her safety. We're post George Floyd. And I think anybody in this community has to recognize what that means when anybody is in that type of situation and the level of stress that they're under and her response. I also take concern with the fact that she requested a supervisor. It sounds like one wasn't available, wasn't available, one should have been available. But with that being stated, that request should have been honored. That could have been part of the de-escalation tactic used to try to calm the situation. At no point in that video do I ever feel or think that it should have been justified that this woman was tased. I felt that's where you guys crossed, not you guys, I apologize. That's where the police officer crossed the line in this situation. And I really do think that there needs to be an investigation to understand how we got to this point. How is this officer able to act in this particular way? And it be, I'm not saying you're saying it's okay, but it can't be justified the particular way. This can't happen going forward. My other concern would be is, I'm a black person in this community. I've lived here my entire life. I'm fifth generation. And there has always been a shaky relationship between the black community and the police in this township. And that's based upon just historical incidents that have occurred. There have been varying stops that you, some of you may be aware of, some of you may not be aware of. Myself, when I was a teenager, I was a victim of being stopped. It creates a level of fear within you. So, whenever you're driving as a black person and you see lights flash behind you, you tense up, you get stressed. And so, when this woman is requesting a white shirt to be present, and I don't see why that's such an unreasonable request considering where we are. Lower Marion Township can do better. And there are going to be certain demands, I think, that the community is going to be asking of the Board of Commissioners in terms of how they're reacting to this incident and how we move forward with this police department. That's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Good evening. Reverend Carolyn Cavendish. And I am the president of the Mainline Black Interdenominational Ministerial Alliance and also pastor of Bethel Laneby Church of Ardmore. And I'm also a resident here in Lower Marion Township. To echo Brian, we have been here before and before and before and before. And that's a problem. It's a problem given that it shows in the trajectory of time that there hasn't been any change. For all of the window dressing, all the policy 3.15.1, which talks about the use of force and the sanctity of human life, what our eyes see, what we've heard, and even I want to bring into this space what we're feeling in our hearts. This is a problem. And it's a problem because you don't see me. We didn't see the young lady. We don't see, we don't hear. In fact, I lift up her words, I want to see a white shirt. We need outside investigative forces in the Lower Marion Police Department from top to bottom. Because something is wrong. Something is wrong that this can be repeatedly happening and we don't see any change. And we have a community that's hurt. In fact, consider the traumatization that's happening at this point with countless stories of others, or even the fear, could this happen to me tomorrow? In fact, on the way in today, I rode in on 23. Right by Wawa. And so, for you to think about as commissioners, do you see and are you hearing? And what is the proper response? And are we willing to have the courageous conversations? Are we willing to do what's necessary from the ground up, even if it costs us our privilege and our power? That's what's on the table tonight. And it's due time. Again, for all the policy, for all the window dressing. So, one, for an outside investigation. Also, I think there's something to be said about the duty to intervene by those other officers. Calm down. Just do what he says. I'm paraphrasing how I took it. Thirdly, for there to be more unction around an independent civilian committee which provides and has a voice around police training, police recommendations, and even disciplinary actions. And this is not uncommon because it's happening in the country. We had the Major Ben report. Anybody remember that in 2017? We've been here before. And for what we saw, and this is a young woman with a family, and the countless other stories that this community continues, and I would hope that this would stop. But the buck is with you. Maybe we do need a white shirt.
Thank you, Reverend Cavendish.
Hi, my name is Crystal Wood. I live at 15 School Lane. And I live in Ardmore. And I've been before this board on many occasions. I'm sad that I have to be here today and sad that I had to watch that post everything that's been happening around policing for people of color. I do ride that road all the time because I go to work down on that end of the block. And, you know, if that was me, I probably would have pulled over safely in somewhere public considering what's post happening around the country. I have been on the other end and been followed by a white female officer, Mary Foudas Rue, to work. And she followed me all the way down to the parking lot till I got out of my car. And one of the white teachers that were going in the building said to me, oh, I think you were racially profiled. So, I know it happens for why the police committee was born out of the profiling they did on Reverend Albert Gladstone Davis. And I'm really concerned about what I see. He had a gun drawn. Suppose that just one went off? How do you explain that to somebody's family when you stop Harry Mobley? Suppose that would have went off? When you stop everyone else in this community with your guns drawn? You would then, that's an accident that's waiting to happen. And what do you explain to their families? You, as a commission board, are supposed to govern everybody in this community. You're elected officials to do that. Underneath the superintendent's leadership, I'm really concerned because some of these incidents have happened on his watch. You cannot be 26-plus years immersed in a community and not know the needs of this community. That tells me that he doesn't care about the needs of this community. I'm not understanding why, like I agree with Reverend Cavendish, that there needs to be an outside counsel to look at and to govern you guys. Because you're not holding him accountable. Mr. McNeely's not holding him accountable. Ernie McNeely, you're not holding this man accountable for his actions or his officers. How can you lead if your own people, his own people, the FOP, have an issue with his leadership? That should be a red flag. If your own people that you're governing underneath you don't feel like their voices are heard or they're not getting good leadership, then you are responsible for putting in goals and objectives into his evaluation and those police officers' evaluations to meet these goals. Are you waiting for one of us to get killed? Or a family member to be lost because of his actions and his police officers' actions? Do you want blood, somebody's blood on your hands because you're not putting in things in place to make sure that he's held accountable and he's doing his job? I really think you need to go back and visit what Major Ben said because I pulled it and looked it up and highlighted. He gave recommendations. He gave recommendations for the police committee in that report of what you needed to do. We paid for it as taxpayers. He came here, he gave you his recommendations, and then you sort of put it on the back burner? You need to do something for someone gets seriously hurt out here. And a family member loses a mother or a father or a son or a daughter behind this man's leadership. You need to hold him accountable and we, the public, need to hold you accountable as elected officials. You're to govern everybody so everybody feels safe in this community.
Hello. My name is Jeanette Williams. I'm a resident of Ardmore. I have not been in Ardmore very long, maybe about six or seven years. Personally, I want nothing but a good relationship with the police department. You know, I value the police department and what the police department does, what they should do. You know, I value the police department and what the police department does, what they should do. But I am here today because I live actually on Montgomery Avenue, right next to Suburban Square. And on Friday, January 6th, between 12:00 and 1:00 p.m., I witnessed a police stop of a young black male, who, it was like three, four police vehicles. The man was on the ground, it had been freezing cold, raining, they had him sitting like on the curb, on that grass part. And it was three police officers surrounding him with their, basically their crotch in his face. And I was like, oh my gosh, so I started bringing out my blanket to let them know someone's watching. And then, however much longer later, the driver drives off. You would have thought this was public enemy number one. But in fact, it must not have been, maybe you guys can look into that incident. Friday, January 6th, 12:00 to 1:00 p.m., traffic stop on Montgomery Avenue. So then I hear about this, and I also would like to bring up the Ardmore Music Hall. I know a couple people who work at the Ardmore Music Hall. Timothy Collins for one, who told me incidents that, you know, he's followed home when he drives home. That there's a woman who works there who was followed home, she walked home seven blocks. She's terrorized, you know, and they're talking to Peter at Ardmore Music Hall about their concerns. And I think to wonder, as an employer, you know, isn't this going to hurt employer, employee prospects for the next person they want, a black person they want to hire at Ardmore Music Hall? If they have to come to the defense of their employees? So that is very, so these things brought me in, when I hear this today, I might, or you know, this week, I said, you know, I really, I've been meaning to show up to one of these meetings, and so I've come today. Now, this incident here, I hear is about tailgating. And tailgating, I really wonder how many people have been stopped for that. That's number one. That's such a petty, minor thing, it happens every single day, all day long. Tailgating says following too closely. And I looked up, and I looked up on a lawyer site, it says we should be a three-second rule. Three seconds behind the next person, no one, very, very few people do this, especially, I don't know what time of day this was, but certainly, this is routine in today's world that people follow closely. But I'd be curious to know how many people get stopped for that. The woman put her hazard lights on to indicate she acknowledged being stopped. And then she wanted to go to a safe place, which was a wah-wah, she wanted to be out in the open, okay? Clearly. And someone at the wah-wah found this concerning enough to record it, okay? So that's concerning right there, to anybody who, would you want this to happen to your family member, okay? She asked for a supervisor, she said she was afraid. He said he didn't care. Don't care that you're afraid, you're a woman, don't care that you're afraid, he's a man, okay? And then another, another officer or two tried to intercept, to assure the woman, and he said, you know, he literally intercepted the woman getting information or whatever the story. But it's clearly, clearly the woman is afraid, clearly she's trying to do everything she can to pretty much save her life. We've had it mentioned, we're living in post George Floyd. And really, people, I thought that, you know, that really turned a page. That we want, we want to have something different from our police department, you know, we really do. And there's all these people who are sitting here, black and white, green and yellow, we're all sitting here. Because as someone said, this is supposed to be a first-class, you know, township. You know, I read something saying this was number one in the country for something or another. You know, and I'm feeling proud to live here, but not now, okay? And now I'm hearing that this is a long history of this? I mean, this has to get addressed. And then the physical violence of reaching inside her car, pulling and yanking on her, tasing her multiple times. I mean, this is not, I have never, actually, go through your records, how many people have you tased? We'd be curious to hear the answer to that, hopefully you guys can look into that. And at the end of the day, this woman's charges are numerous. Her lawyer, you know, are extensive that she's going to have to now be involved with. Her life is stopped, all of this, and the police officer has death duty? Come on, guys, you know what I mean, this doesn't make any sense. And then there was something written that, oh, well, no one was hurt. We're all hurt. We are all hurt, that we have to continue to live like this and live in fear. And I can give you more examples, but I know we're trying to be respectful of time, okay? But I would just say that she was stopped for something that, really. That I think you need to look through your records on that to see, you know, why would this even have happened in the first place? Fleeing and eluding the safety of a black civilian in our country today, and apparently in our township. You have to go to a safe place. A safe place with other people to see, and no one else has to do this. Only we do, okay? And that is not fair, that is not called, that is called unethical, okay? And she asked for a supervisor, she did everything she could do, and really, you know, it is time to do something different. I would ask you guys, do something different. Let's see an outcome that brings some kind of solutions to this. We are post George Floyd. We really do want to work with the police department, we don't want to be enemies.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Reverend Mark Tyler, pastor of Mother Bethel African Methodist Episcopal Church in Philadelphia, and also the co-director for Power Interfaiths Live Free Campaign. Power has congregations that are here on the main line as well. A number of the persons who work with us are here and some have spoken. I want to just thank the speaker before me for really naming that pain that we all felt, whether you live in Lower Marion or not. The video, the result of it, what it's done to people. And some might say, well, why would somebody who doesn't live in Lower Marion feel compelled to be here tonight? First of all, I've been speaking to Reverend Cavaness, and to Reverend Tattenhurst, and to others, and offering ourselves to be of support and help. We've been working on police accountability issues in Philadelphia, as you might imagine, for some time. And so we're here for them, but we're also here for ourselves. First of all, I have members who live in Lower Marion, who attend my congregation. And my wife drives through this township almost every day. Somebody would say, well, she doesn't have to drive through Lower Marion, she can take 76, she doesn't have to come through. That's true. But I didn't have to buy my suits that I bought last year in Lower Marion. I don't have to have my car serviced repeatedly in Lower Marion. I don't have to take her out to nice restaurants in Lower Marion. I guess I could detour and keep my money in Philadelphia or somewhere else. And that's a question that many people in Philadelphia are asking now, because we think this is a safe place to come, from the trauma that we experience on a daily basis there, only to meet it here as well. So I want you to just know that tonight, we're here, some are watching on Zoom, but others will be hearing back as we report out what we've heard tonight. And we heard all the right things, but the right things without the action doesn't mean a thing. And so if you can allow someone to remain on the force after all the disciplinary action takes place and the recommendations are done, if we can find a new place for him, that's a problem. And I just want to say that there are people who are willing to show us a problem with their money as well. So thank you very much for the time.
Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Olanion Adefumi. I have a question for you. I'm from Philadelphia. Put yourself in her shoes, and or mine. And imagine if this country was one that had a whole lot of black police officers who often kill white people. And you're in that car, and these men who look like me are in uniform, and they want you to get out. Put yourself in that situation. Are you going to get out?
Good evening, commissioners and police chief. My name is Linda Fields. I'm from Upper Marion, King of Prussia. I am the director and founder of the Montgomery County Black Caucus, which is affiliated with the Pennsylvania Black Caucus. And I just want to speak to trauma. The disregard that that officer had for that woman, not only traumatized her, the people that were in her car, it traumatized me. I have family members that are police officers. And I love my police, I've had a nephew lost to being killed as a police officer. It's not the police as the office that they hold, it's the individual. And this particular individual was completely disrespectful, inconsiderate, and very threatening. And to have to come through Lower Marion, I have members that are part of our caucus. And it's something to be said, that the disregard for so many years of the people that have been affected by bad police officers, because I, a person that believe in the good ones. But you must, as it was stated, be strong enough and proud enough to realize that as things escalate for us, they will escalate for you. And when it happens to your daughter, or your wife, or your sister, or your cousin, how are you going to deal with that? What are you going to say then? Is it going to be another 28 years before anything is done? I do not believe that a person that has created harm should be investigated by their own people. It should be an outside investigation. If you really want justice and non-bias, bring in an outside investigator to look at this. But just remember, the trauma, it manifests, it doesn't go away. And the reaction to people is going to manifest. Because we don't even know the results of the trauma, and how long it's going to affect you and all of us. Her children are traumatized, they are afraid. She wasn't concerned so much about herself, she was concerned about her 13-year-old son. And her other children. Whatever she did wrong, the law, like you said, will take care of that. But it should have never happened. There was no reason for the gun to be drawn. Not for tailgating. It should not have happened. We want to talk about and try to draw narratives and scenarios. This man had his gun drawn. They're telling her to calm down, but why didn't they tell him to calm down? Something must be done with the bad actors. And it needs to be done as soon as possible. Because if he acts out with us, it's only a matter of time before he acts out with other people.
Joseph Abramson, Ballackinwood. Sometimes I get in trouble for speaking more analytical than emotional. But I think something should be said. And I think there are five, five issues, really. There's a race issue, a police issue, a traffic issue, and the internet issue. Right off the bat, you know, I know that everyone wants to make it a race issue, but it's maybe 10%. Because the police officer did not know who he was pulling over until he exited his vehicle with his gun drawn to the car. Before then, you couldn't see through the car, and I think that's something to keep in mind. You know, people mention tailgating, that it's not a big deal. It is a big deal, because if someone tailgates, they could crash into your car. Especially on the 23, because it's a windy road. But, you know, one thing we have is the internet issue. You know, last week, State Representative Mary Daly and Senator Capaletti issued a condemnation of the police department. And I'm just wondering if they saw the police video before last week when they issued the condemnation? Because how can we, and again, on the internet, when we see half a video, how can we issue a condemnation if we didn't see the full action, the full incident? And that's something that we ourselves have to keep in mind, you know? There's justice, and justice sometimes takes time. But it certainly is not instant, you know? And when you're on scene of a police officer doing something, and you take out your phone to take a video, you should know that there was something probably that necessitated that traffic stop. And just to go, again, I know you can't talk about the scenario, but, you know, the woman claimed that her father or her parent is a Pennsylvania state trooper. So we know what she's thinking. And someone, you know, why the officer had his gun drawn? Yeah, it's probably a bad idea, but keep in mind that for a traffic stop, that's one of the most deadliest interactions with a police officer. You know, I, obviously, I, you know, my interactions with police are different than everyone else's interactions with police. But I have just two scenarios that I had. I was in New York City, a police officer threatened me with a night in jail, because I was a little, you know, I had an attitude with him. You know, he wanted me to pull over, I was waiting for my grandmother, I couldn't. And he came and said, you know what, you'll spend the night in jail if you don't continue. And a few weeks ago, or a month ago, I was speeding on the highway, totally wrong. I got pulled over, you know, the police came up to me, and they gave him the look, but yeah, he got me. He, you know, he went back to the car, gave me the ticket, you know, I had the summons, and I went on my way. People don't realize that a police officer's job is stressful, and a community's person's job is stressful. But the last, when I got pulled over by a Lower Marion Police Department officer, we were talking, because he had to call for backup. And the one thing he said was that what differentiates a ticket from a warning or from nothing is, don't be a jerk. And that's illegal, you know, yeah, if you're a jerker officer, you'll get a ticket. If you're not a jerk, he'll maybe let it slide. But, but I, you know, I travel across the United States, and I travel internationally, and I've been involved with, and I've been involved with a lot of police departments. And it's, I think, wrong to put so much blame on the Lower Marion Police Department. Because from my, I've been here around 10 years. And, you know, I walk City Avenue, I get in, stop with them, I talk to them. You know, there are bad apples, maybe, but by far, the Lower Marion Police Department, and these are the officers on the ground, have been the most professional in every interaction that I've had with them, and every interaction that I've seen them with other people. And I'll just leave with the bottom line. Had the woman pulled over within a couple of minutes at the many, many, many safe locations, this would not have happened. We don't know that, but that's, the officer pulled someone over, had this person stopped, this would not have happened. So I think we do have an issue with the police, yes. The police are looking into why this officer came out with the gun drawn. But we also have an issue that, you know, it's not the internet. You can't just demand whatever you want when you're pulled over by the police. Like it says on the website, there's a PDF that you can read of what to do when pulled over by the police. Bottom line is, when you argue or fight with the police, you never win. When have you ever seen a video of fighting with a police officer and you walk out with nothing happening to you? And just keep that in mind, thank you.
Hello, how y'all doing? My name is Ajay Austin, I am a resident of Lower Marion. I'm also an affiliate with the Mainline, NPLCP, that's my phone. So I'm not going to be long-winded, because I have observed, I've learned how to do that. I'm from Philly, but I've lived in Wayne, and I've also lived out here. I know when people check out. So, because I know that we are all a little bit checked out, I'm not going to be long-winded. I just know that whether we argue or not, just by seeing what we look like when we get seen in public, people that look like my family and I, it's already a weapon. people that look like my family and I, it's already a weapon. So because what we look like and I guess our expressions are already a weapon, we tend to just be treated with a little less professionalism. And I'm not going to make this a war between people that are in the audience or not. But I do know that there have been a lot of stops, a lot of things that have happened over the years that don't get exposed because of whatever reason. However, they do happen. This just happened to be all over the internet. So I'm glad that somebody knows about what is happening. But I just, you know, want us to just care a little bit more because from all of the conversations that we've been having over the years, I have concluded that there is really no care for us. They say that we're a part of the community, but there, we always get pushed to the side. We always get treated a different way. But that's okay because we'll still, you know, perform wherever we go like we keep having to. Every single person that looks like somebody that is in my family or myself is going to have to perform in almost every space that they walk into, whether it be today, or tomorrow, or the next day, or at work, or at church, when it's not just people that look like us. And we'll continue to perform, just like some of us in this room that don't look like people in my family will continue to perform and act like they care about us. But, you know, we'll still make it through. Have a good night.
With permission, my name's David Tatkinhorst. I'm a forebachelor in this community. I served St. Luke United Methodist for 26 years. And I drove up and down Lancaster Avenue every day on my way back and forth from home to church. And just to give a little bit of a different perspective, I was stopped several times on my way out. Once for speeding, once for, I, somebody went through a yellow light, and I followed right behind them. The light might have been orange there. And a siren went off right after I went through that light. I kept going and pulled into the Chipotle lot down there on Lancaster Avenue, pulled around and into a parking space. When the police officer came up to my car, I could tell he was a little bit miffed. But he laughed. He said, "Oh, I see what you were doing there." And he took my information. He went back to the car. He came back and he said, "I'm going to give you a warning." Gave me a warning. And then he proceeded to give me advice about my car. Gave me advice saying, "You have a Prius there. You need to get a plate under that to keep the catalytic converter from being stolen." I really appreciated that. I went and got the thing. I appreciated that. I wish everybody was treated like that. I wish everybody was treated with that kind of respect. That kind of patience, that kind of time.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Burley Melis.
Ma'am, could you pull the microphone a little closer? And again, your name?
I'm a resident of Ballack Kinwood, Barbara Burley Melis. And I came today simply to make sure that there were faces alongside my friends in the black community to recognize that this, for the commission to recognize that this is an issue that is of concern to many of your constituents, not just the black community. I am shaken by what I saw. And I couldn't, I wasn't planning to speak, but I couldn't stand by to have any insinuation that the victim be blamed. I have full appreciation and respect for the dangerous and important role that police play. And I have also been the beneficiary of their professionalism. But there is no question with the history and the pattern that we see that there is a differential in treatment and that that's a concern that should be for all of us. Justice is a concern for all of us in this community. And I hope that it is a concern that you all share.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm Laura Solomon, a resident of Wynwood, a business owner in Ardmore. And I just wanted to echo what Barbara said and also the Reverend said, that I am living proof of the differential treatment of the police force in Lower Merion. I've been nothing but protected by the police force, and I've never, ever been treated the way that young woman was, and none of us should be. And I sincerely hope you address it fully.
My name is Melanie Etamad. I'm from Bryn Mawr. I've lived in Bryn Mawr for 30 years. I'm very disturbed by what I saw. For a very long time, I've heard about racial profiling. And now I have a reflex. Whenever I'm in the township and I see a car that's been pulled over, I always look to see if the driver is black. And I'm very, very, very sad to say to our police officers and department that in 99% of the cases, I'm always right because I suspected someone black. And I'm very disturbed when I'm found to be correct. I'm just a mother. I'm just a homeschool mom. I don't work professionally in Lower Merion, but I'm around. I'm concerned about the fact that we are a 97% white community. When I wanted to raise my daughter with diversity, I deliberately would go to the Ardmore Public Library. Sad to only see not the kind of diversity that I hope to see. So I spent much more time with programs in the city so that my daughter could be around diverse people. It completely and utterly destroys me to think that in this day, after what we have seen on the national news and what everyone has experienced, I am standing here, I feel like I have no choice as a white woman, blond hair, look the Mainline part, to not come up and say, this is, there are no words. This is beyond, totally beyond unacceptable that this officer, I don't even necessarily want to say the officer because it's a whole context. It's a whole atmosphere. It's a whole everything. It's not just the police department. It's everybody in this township is responsible and our country for this behavior. This is a spiritual, moral crisis. The health of our community, the health, my feeling, I wanted to just raise my daughter in a healthy way, in a healthy way. And, you know, so many people suffer from high blood pressure, chronic illness, so many things. That is not just because of little, you know, I don't know. You don't eat the right food. So much of this thing is because it's trauma. It is, we need better relationships. We need to treat each other in a better way. We need to afford every citizen with a kind of dignity and respect. I'm sorry, but when that woman said, listen, let me just say, for years, I had people in my life who said to me, Melanie, if you ever get pulled by a police officer and you're on a dark road and you're by yourself, do not pull your car over. Somebody could be impersonating an officer. You don't know. You should go to a public place, and then you pull over. And I'm white. I have never been treated like this. I can only imagine, can you imagine if you're black? I mean, how many of you are black right now? So I'm speaking, I'm speaking to the majority. I'm not trying to be rude and disrespectful. Truly, I'm trying to be respectful. If you have never had that experience, I mean, generation, this is not just, oh, it happened to my mother. This is so long in our, in our culture. And it's in the water. It's in the food. It's everywhere. I'm, you know, this is, I didn't even come to talk about this tonight. I came about something else. And when I walked in the door, I saw this horrible thing on the screen. And I said, okay, I have to see, you know, I have to talk if I let other people. But as a white person, I have no choice. We are sacrificing, we are sacrificing everything by not dealing with this seriously. We are all connected. We, anything that affects any black person in this room affects every single white person in this room. They are not as, the black community is not separate from us. We are all together. I just don't even know what language to use to say that this absolutely cannot, this cannot go like this. This is not standard, ordinary business practice. I know somebody talks about policy, this and this. We have to have a completely different paradigm to address this issue. This is, cannot be standard way of doing business.
Ma'am, if you could wrap it up, please?
I'm sorry.
Hi, my name is Kambi Etamad, and I'm really just the footnote to my wife who just spoke. I was born and raised in Lower Merion. I'm a psychiatrist. I'm an educator. I've worked in the addiction population. I've worked in the criminal segment. I know a lot about de-escalation. I know what it's like to get my ass kicked when I didn't ask for it. I'm Iranian, so I dealt with a couple of years of hatred towards me as an Iranian back in the hostage time. But I cannot, as a white man, ever understand what it's like to be a person of color or a woman. And I won't pretend that I do. I won't attempt to say again what everybody has already said so much better than I would. The merit of everything that's already been said from all sides of this dialogue, from the police to every grievance and suggestion that has come, I actually embrace, I think they all fit together. But what I want to address is the question of something that we never really want to talk about because we don't know how to talk about it, which is that setting aside why this stop happened and what led up to the interaction between the driver and the police officer. What I saw when we walked in, like she said, we came to address a different issue, but the incident was on the video. What I saw as a mental health provider, as an educator, as a dad, was the fundamental humanity that every human being possesses. And I've worked with the worst of the worst. And there is a small percentage of people that may be unredeemable. But the majority of us have true, deep, good, golden humanity if we dig deep enough and bring it out, if we're trained to bring it out, if we live in environments and communities that help bring it out. And I think this is the issue because we need to have the discussion of how do we train everybody, of course, the police officers, but everybody? Because the issue of race, the issue of aggression, the issue of trauma, the issue of gender oppression, the issue of every oppression and prejudice is based on the fact that most of the day, most people are not in touch with their best humanity. But we've got thousands of years of religious tradition. We've got hundreds of years of psychology and psychiatry. We've got millennia of philosophy and education. We, there are solutions. I see it happening in the work that I do. And I think that it's possible that we raise the level or deepen the level of dialogue as well as action. And perhaps the board consider pursuing a path of bringing together leaders of faith communities, educators, therapists, whatever you think might be worth bringing to the table to discuss, not in some like ivory tower sort of bogus kind of rhetoric way, but how do we on the ground begin to train people to be people first? Okay, you've got a skill set. I got the skill set of a psychiatrist. You've got the skill set of a cop. You've got the skill set of a lawyer. But that's just in your toolkit. That's not what you are. But that's not how we operate. How do we retrain people to do that in the professional environment? This is something worth addressing and looking at and maybe even being a national leader for since we are sort of the best in other things nationally.
Good evening. My name is Gigi Moffett, and I'm from the borough of Norbert. I myself am very familiar with cancer in a police department. In my time as being Vice President of Norbert Borough Council, it was my charge to go through the process of investigation of our police department, policies, process, oversight. What we found was shocking and hurtful. I never cried so much. I never was so destroyed to believe what was happening in my community. But it was happening. And as a matter of point, it was one of your retired officers that brought into my personal attention what was happening in my community. And I'm looking at Mr. Sinai and Mr. Gaveran and Mr. Zella in particular. And I say this to you today. You have a police committee, which is comprised of three white men. Their job is to provide oversight. You hold the public safety in your hands as elected officials. Some of you are attorneys. Some of you don't know what the police department is supposed to be doing at all. It is time for change in this community. It is time to change your superintendent. It is time for you to change your sergeants. It is time for you to change your officers. We have, you must, you must please dissolve your current public safety committee and take a woman and a person of color. And I will say to you in this moment what I said almost 20 years ago when Virginia Pollard had a struggle to be named to an all-white school board. If the community does not see themselves reflected in a body that has so much control over their lives, they tend to disconnect. And I want you to understand that the people who are here tonight are desperately trying to get your attention so they don't have to disconnect and continue to be in pain and suffering and hurt. As a woman and as a survivor of violence, I need you all to understand what happened there. I couldn't even look at it. You should be ashamed. Thank you.
Good evening. Eileen Wasserman. I've been a member of this community for over 40 years. A lot has been said tonight. I will be brief. I'm glad you're, I'm sure you're comforted by hearing that I will be brief. But what I want to say is that we are a community. And while we are one community, I know and think about every day how my experience, looking the way I do, is very different from so many people in our community. And as has been said, if this community is not safe for everyone, then we have some work to do. If people in this community are traumatized and fearful, then we have some work to do. And this moment is not a moment for us to adjudicate right now, as was said in the beginning of this. But this moment is an opportunity to take the next step and use this as recognition that this could, this could have gone down worse. It was bad enough. And let us capture this time and recognize what it means to have empathy. Regardless of what the stop was for, this woman said, "I am afraid." She said, "I am afraid." That was a moment to pause. As someone also said, that was a moment to slow down. That was a moment to take stock. And what we all need to do is, in this next moment, all come together to do what we need to do to make this community safe for everyone, black, brown, white, young, old, able-bodied, and other, everyone, to make this community safe for everyone. Thank you.
Olivia Moffett, Norbert Borough. I just want to take a moment to address Superintendent McGrath's statement in his presentation about the officer approaching the vehicle with unknown risk. Superintendent McGrath in his presentation describes the civilian as uncooperative and agitated. I hope that the superintendent realizes he's just said to this room, to this board, that his expectation is that a civilian is to remain calm and collected as an officer approaches a vehicle with a gun drawn, not a baton, not a taser, not with handcuffs. not with handcuffs, not with his hands, a gun. This is, in my opinion, a double standard. I'd recommend that this board review the policies put forward by the city of Philadelphia to halt all minor traffic offenses. Please examine your data of how many traffic stops escalate, where force is used, where a taser is drawn, where his gun is drawn. Then put in the work to amend your policies around minor traffic offenses. Consider eliminating them, hire an outside investigator. Kenan Anderson, Philando Castillo, thank you.
Good evening, my name is Martin Carroll, I live in Belle Kinwood. I just have two brief comments, I cannot, I'm not trained to address the specifics of the incident that happened, but as a citizen of Lower Marion Township, I say, I am here tonight to say that I cannot, I will not live or pay taxes in a district where racial profiling is considered acceptable. I will also say, as a physician who works at the Philadelphia Veterans Administration Hospital and deals with individuals who have post-traumatic stress disorder, that if you think for one second that it is equivalent for a white man to be pulled over for a traffic stop at a black person or a person of color, man or woman, then you do not understand trauma, you do not understand traumatic stress disorder, and you're not really paying attention to what's going on around you. Thank you for your time.
Hello, I'm Laney Goldrab. I was witness to the event that occurred two Sundays ago. I'm the person whose video recording has circulated the internet and on the news. And I cannot speak with the passion that so many people have spoken before me, and I think that you have seen that your community is passionate about this, and so I would like to just share that as witness to the event, I can say without a doubt that the following phrases are inaccurate and misleading in the police statement and the letter distributed by Commissioner Bernheim. So, one, actively resisted the follow-up investigation. Force was required to take the driver safely into custody. These two phrases elide, one, the immediate unholstering and pointing of the gun, two, the threat to break the window that is seen both in the body cam footage and the footage taken by myself and one other woman at the Wawa. Three, the fact that Ms. Jordan was not driving away or attempting to flee the scene and waiting for a sergeant to come as she had been promised by the officers on site. Four, the officers' refusal to treat Ms. Jordan with dignity or respect, forcing her to be half-naked in full view of the street. This community clearly is passionate about seeing justice served, and this community is not stupid. We do not feel that a police's internal investigation will placate our desire to see justice be served, that we feel that a report that says the police did nothing wrong will not convince us that the police did nothing wrong. I call for a county-wide review of policing and a recognition of the deception and lies in both the police statement and the letter distributed to the public. Also, the dismissal involved in arguing that a black officer cannot participate in racial profiling is frankly absurd and mocking to the intellect of this entire community. And so I would like an apology from the Board of Commissioners, and I am calling, as well as the rest of this room is, for a sweeping review of our policing policies in this county and in Lower Marion in particular. Thank you.
Good evening, pardon me, good evening, Brian Gordon, Marion Station. Also, former Lower Marion Township Commissioner and member of the NAACP Main Line, former Chair of the Police Committee. The reason why I'm a member of NAACP Main Line is that I felt there was some unfinished business in my work as Commissioner, specifically on policing, and I brought the issues to them and I found their work to be compelling. And of course, there's never, I mean, this is the unfinished business of America, but specifically, the reason I, what I brought to them was that there was a portion of Major Ben's report that just didn't make it into policy and remained on the cutting room floor. It wasn't a perfect report, it wasn't written in the King's English or Shakespearean English. And in fact, some of its statements were very, some of the statements in the report were very vague. And they were vague because he was trying to sort of balance keeping the police engaged and supportive of what he was saying and trying to effectuate change. It was subtle, and there were portions of the report that were, that really needed to be clarified. I offer myself as a, as a resource for you. I sent all of you a list of the portions of the report that did not make it into practice, and I asked that those be reexamined. I'll look through my files and I'll try to find the memo again. Also, I ran into Major Ben two months ago in Chestnut Hill, he's doing well, he's active. We have spoken numerous times, and I reached out to him immediately after the George Floyd incident to develop what I would call a national protocol on race in police. And I sent that to you as well. He's a resource for you, you can bring him back, you can ask him to analyze this and, you know, get his responses. We live in a post-George Floyd era, we live in a post-Rodney King era, and Eric Gardner in Staten Island, and the names are too long and too many for me to remember. But we live in a world where the, where we have to, we should examine if we're to be the best, have the best police department we can have, how do we deal with the fact that there is fundamental fear from African-Americans during a police stop? What do we do? How do we deal with that? So I just want to raise maybe three, this isn't complete, comprehensive, but just three issues to explore. The first is, we should explore, should a taser be used to enforce compliance with oral commands absent an immediate threat to the, the immediate threat to an officer? I'm not sure, but it's something we should discuss. Secondly, we should explore, as Superintendent McGrath mentioned, de-escalation. He referred to as mid-event disengagement. This could be, this is about slowing down, disengaging, de-escalation. Mike taught me, when I was in your shoes, that one of the most important things an officer can do is to put something between him or her and the threat. It could be a podium, he showed me on a desk, it could be a police car, he spoke of it this evening, and that was put the police car between, the officers could have put the police car between them and the suspect and waited until things calmed down. One other very brief point, I know my time is out, but one other very brief point is, having dealt with use of force issues in Philadelphia, when someone requests a white shirt, it's probably pretty widely known that a white shirt is a supervisor in Philadelphia. Mike wears the same uniform as his officers in Philadelphia, whether it's a prisoner, prison guard, or a police officer, a white shirt is a supervisor. And if you add the request for supervisor, a white shirt with the request for sergeant or a supervisor, it was at least seven times, and that was, it's really concerning. And one of the, in a, in a post-George Floyd world, one of the questions I'm thinking about that we should explore is absent an immediate threat to the officers, if someone asks for a supervisor, should the use of force stop? So, I'm happy to be a resource for you and happy to continue this discussion. Thank you.
Hello, everyone, my name is Pastor Nicole Austin Hall, I live in Radnor. However, I have had many interactions with Lower Marion Police just because I have five African-American and Jamaican young men who live on the Main Line. This is a constant state of terror and trauma, as everyone has said, when we come on the Main Line. I don't even drive, I live in Radnor, I don't even drive across Lower Marion anymore if I have to go to 63rd in Lancaster for church, because I'm afraid of Lower Marion Police stopping me every time I'm in the car with my sons. So this is something that needs to be addressed overall, we keep having meetings to have meetings. How many more meetings are we going to have without action? You say you're going to do one thing and then something else happens, and then we don't have the support that is needed in the area, across the Main Line. It's not just Lower Marion, because I live in St. David's. So, it's across the Main Line, and something has to be done. My suggestion is that the people, the psychologists who came in here with his wife, the man who just came up, the pastors that are in the area, the superintendents and the teachers that are in the area, that y'all have to come together on one accord, and y'all have to really get it together, because I'm fearful. My daughter drove us here and I was like, "Slow down, I don't want to get stopped by the cops, you know how Lower Marion Police is." As a black woman, I'm a mom who lost two children, so I know what it is to bury a child. I know what it is to bury more than one child. So we have to come together on one accord. Y'all sitting here so disconnected is disrespectful, because as the man said, you know, he doesn't know what it is to be a black person being stopped. I know what it is. My sons were stopped walking through Lower Marion Township and the police harassed them. It has to stop. At some point in time, we have to come together, we have to repent, we have to forgive each other, and then we have to come together so we can work together on one accord. I'm Nicole Austin Hall, God bless you all.
Yeah, hi, my name is Jamil Khan, I'm from Havertown. I'm here because on Sunday at Zion Baptist, Virginia Pollard asked folks to come for support, and when Virginia Pollard asks me to do something, I do it. But I wasn't planning on speaking, but there are just a couple of things I just want to shine a light on, and I think I may be close to the end and I don't want to keep us, but I keep going back to one phrase, which is, "You don't get to decide." "You don't get to decide." "You work for us." "If we don't decide, if we don't get to decide, who does?" "Who does?" The second thing I want to shine a light on is, why in these videos do we always see the lead officer who is escalating, you can see the temperature is rising on both sides. Why does, why do all the officers stand back? Why does nobody step in? Why does, and I would think if, if the issue is, you don't want to show up, your colleague, I would think you would want to help your colleague, you would want to protect them as things are escalating, and step in. You don't need to bring a podium to put it in between. You have four or five other officers who see where it's going. One of them could get in between. So I think there's, you know, that we can investigate the single officer, but let's look at the culture. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, my name is Jordan Howell, I'm an attorney. I didn't come here planning to speak, but as I've listened to everything that's been said tonight, I feel compelled to offer a suggestion. Earlier today, I met with several of the community leaders from the area. Reverend Carolyn Cavaness, who spoke earlier, from Bethel Church in Ardmore, Reverend Scott Dorsey, from the Second Baptist Church of Wayne, Reverend James Pollan Senior of the Zion Baptist Church of Ardmore, and David Ackerman from Bethan. And the resounding notes that kept coming up were the fact that this has been an ongoing issue for years. And so my suggestion, so that we can move past this and try to prevent someone else from being seriously hurt, and to try to culture trust in the community, is to create an independent committee, a police oversight committee, that reflects the community, a man, a woman, a person of color, someone in law enforcement. Okay, this committee needs to have teeth, they need to be able to do something. They should be involved in complaints, an independent body to review a complaint when it comes in. Imagine being someone who files a complaint against a police officer and then getting a call from that person's partner. Okay, that, that does not conducive to an independent investigation. This body should be involved in policies, they should be able to review the policies and make recommendations. And if the recommendations aren't going to be followed, the police department should put in writing why they're not going to follow the recommendations. This body should be involved with the disciplinary process. The community should have involvement in the conversation, the charging decisions that go into the police officers that are accused of misconduct. The community should be involved in the process, the trial, the hearing, whatever it's called, when those police officers are being evaluated. And the committee should be able to make recommendations on the discipline, if any, that is imposed on that police officer. And if the police department's not going to follow that recommendation, they should again put it in writing. It should be public and the community should be involved, and their involvement should be reflected. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment from anybody who's here tonight? Jody, do you have people online?
We do have several people online, I'll start putting them in, the first one is Sarah Atkins.
Ms. Atkins?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, so my name's Sarah Atkins and I'm from Pendwin. As a woman, when I learned to drive, that if a police officer tried to pull me over to turn on my hazard lights and find a safe, public, populated place to pull over. Where this woman was, there is no shoulder of the road. She tried, but there was not enough room to safely pull over. Her hazard lights were on, the Wawa was the first place one could safely stop. There is no indication she was trying to get away. If I, as a white woman, had done the same thing, I would not have been met with the police at my window with a gun drawn. And I have never been asked to get out of my car for a traffic stop. She clearly asks for a white shirt and for de-escalation. The officer says, "You damn right, I have my gun out, you didn't stop." And escalate instead of de-escalate. She is scared, I would have also been. I was scared she would be killed just watching that video. She wasn't fleeing, there was no proof of a weapon on her or that she was a risk. Almost 40% of the township budget is for the police. Why in this age is the use of force used on, in 37.5 times on black people when the township is less than 5% black by the Lower Marion Police Department? The officers were supposedly trained in de-escalation, but clearly nobody could onsite actually implement this. Every officer onsite is complicit in this excessive force. Our community is not safe with them on the job. We need a full and external investigation, which is made completely public, and until that point, all involved should be suspended without pay. And until results are done, they should not be brought back. And the police officer who used the taser and pulled the gun should be fired immediately. This presentation, quite frankly, came across to me not to have created a community conversation, but rather to shut down the conversation and discredit her. We need that external investigation. And I am saying as an individual right now, for everybody listening, there is commissioners' races this year. We're watching you. Thank you.
The next person online is Alexandra O'Neill.
Alexandra O'Neill, I'm in Wynwood.
O'Neill, can you, can you turn up your microphone a bit, we may not...
Can you hear me better?
Yes, thank you.
Sure.
That's better.
So one thing that I want to point out from the police department presentation, and I know a couple of people speaking from the community mentioned it, but the police department presentation did not mention that almost as soon as the officer started to use his siren, the driver put her flashers on. Many people have spoken tonight about her safety, not the officer's safety, we're talking about her safety, about trauma. She did what she needed to do to keep herself and the people who were in her vehicle safe. She pulled over in a public space, and quite frankly, I would be scared to see what might have happened had she pulled over where no one was around to witness that. Because that officer immediately, and we, this has been discussed, the fact that he had his gun out was the exact opposite of de-escalation. I think that this makes every single person in our community less safe. I think that this can't stand, this is not acceptable in our community, and we are going to continue to put pressure on you, our commissioners, to make sure that you all... to make sure that you also do not treat this as acceptable in our community. I will echo the calls from other people that there should be an outside investigation, that there should be a group of community members who are more involved in the changes that need to be made. And I was talking to someone earlier and I was thinking, if I witnessed a situation, if there was a person of color in our community who was having a crisis, they fell and hit their head or whatever it was, and I felt like it would be a situation in which I would need to call the police. I don't know that I would feel safe doing that because I don't know which officer would show up. And I don't know what snap judgments they would make upon arriving at the scene. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. O'Neil.
Next up is Ms. Adrian Seltzer.
Hello. Please forgive my lack of video. I am on vacation and I don't know how much bandwidth I have. You guys all know what I look like anyway. My name is Adrian Seltzer. I live in Wynwood. I am the vice president of the NAACP Maymine Branch. I just want to. A.G. Taylor spoke earlier and it brought tears to my eyes because this is the feelings that she has just being a black woman in America. And I am totally upset by the fact that Sarah said it. Almost 40% of our budget is for the police. The police keep saying they're understaffed. But somehow on this unarmed woman, I think there were six police cars that got there. Doesn't sound like an understaffed department to me. They please have this new toy. And it appears that's what they're just using it for, as a toy. A visual reality device to use for de-escalation. I don't think it's working. I am also calling for an independent review. I know several people in this field. I can give you some recommendations besides Brian Gordon. And everyone else was way more elegant than, eloquent than I am. So, oh, please do a favor. Take the timer off. People are speaking heartfelt and you have the stupid timer on. Jeez. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jody.
Next up is Anita Friday.
Good evening. We've spoken about the fear that the woman had when the police approached her. And one of the things that's important is that we consider the fear that the officer had. Why, quite often, white people, white people in power are afraid just by virtue of the presence of a person of color. And that's one reason these situations escalate. And part of training would require officers to recognize the fact that people of color are human and have rights to. And there's no reason for that apprehension, that unreasonable apprehension to be a part of the initial reaction. And there are citizen review commissions throughout the country. There are all kinds of models for that. And I would hope that, that's something that, that I practice. As I'm Anita Friday and I live in Brooklyn and I wanted to just share that.
Thank you, Ms. Friday.
Next up is Robert Barton.
Mr. Barton?
And we just lost, there was somebody else that had their hand up though. Okay, we have Kim Lippens.
What's the last name is?
Lippens, L-I-P-E-T-Z.
Okay. Ms. Lippens?
Not sure what's, either Mr. Barton or Ms. Lippens. If you would like to turn on your camera.
Hi, I'm not sure if my name is, who's next, Robert Barton? I've never heard that name before. My name is Lisa Proznitz. I live in Penn Valley. And I'm joining tonight to witness the events that I had seen online and get a fuller picture of the incident that happened. And want to say that I'm, I'm here to stand by my black neighbors and friends and everyone in this community in asking for an independent investigation to be sure to include members of our community in that process. What, what we witnessed tonight, which, which happened to an actual human is, is so disturbing. It's very, very difficult to put words to. But I. I, I'm asking you to really hold, hold our responsible actors in this responsible. These are, these are people who are supposed to be keeping us safe. They're, they're going into our communities. They're going into our schools. Our, our children are watching. And I just, I'm really asking you to do the right thing here. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Final person is Kim Lippens.
Ms. Lippens?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, yes. Can you turn your camera on, please?
I actually can't. I am like Adrian. I am away in New Haven, taking care of a sick relative. And I'm in a hotel without proper video. So I live in Narberth. I live in the Lower Marion portion of Narberth. So I get the best of both worlds, I guess. I have three teenage sons. Many of you I know because I go to a lot of school board meetings. This is the first time I have ever contacted my commissioner. I'm really embarrassed to say that. I've been living in Narberth for 15 years and I have never contacted my commissioner. This is a community issue. Other people have mentioned it. This is an issue in our school district. It's an issue when there is violence against people of color in the district. The district doesn't acknowledge it, whether that's at the school level, at the township level, at the county level. This is a cultural issue. But that's not anything that we're going to solve in the short run. So I just wanted to say a few things because I, I really wasn't planning on speaking. I came, it was really important that I joined in on this meeting tonight. I was hoping that I would feel better. I was so floored by the PowerPoint presentation and I'm not sure, maybe I missed who was presenting. I, I logged on, but I, I didn't get the name of who actually, from the police department, was presenting. That presentation was literally salt in the wound. The way in which it went over and over again, well, the gun was drawn, but it was by a side. The gun was, it, clearly in this video, this woman says numerous times, I am scared. He has a gun drawn. He had a gun drawn for tailgating. She was not fleeing the police. The timeframe from beginning to end. And for those of us who know this area and know that Wawa well, with three teenage boys, I know that Wawa well and I know these roads pretty well. There's no place to stop. The person presenting today said over and over again, she had multiple places to stop. I drive all the time there in 15 years, even with ways on. I wouldn't have found a place to stop. I would go to the Wawa. She says she's scared. He had a gun out. I. I don't know the long history, even though I've lived here a long time. I've seen enough just in our school district that makes me aware. And having grown up in a community that was very diverse, where I was a minority. It's been an issue for me with my boys. When my son, my oldest son goes out and drives with his black friends, I always tell him to be careful. When he's driving with his non-black friends, I don't feel that need. So I'll just end it with this. Tailgating? She turns on her hazards. She pulls over within a minute. Police with a gun. And then she gets tased. And Sarah is right. Commissioners elections are coming up. And there are a lot of folks who are feeling really engaged. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Lippens. Jody, is there anybody else?
I have one more person who just put their hand up. Reverend Tiffany Let, we just lost the last name, Martin.
Reverend Martin?
Hi. Reverend Tiffany Let Martin from Bethel Amy Church in West Chester. I'm a, I live in Plymouth Meeting, Pennsylvania. I'm a teacher both and a pastor. I just wanted to say I'm hoping that the panelists and the committee will look over the video of tonight just to see, those of us who are on this, this realm, we, all we did was see your faces and the eye rolls. And it was disturbing to see how some were saying that they were disengaged. Yes, yes, just watch back the video so you can see how you were perceived by people on the outside. Just a couple of things. The blinkers were on. That meant that she saw the cop and she was going to pull over. I've gone past Route 23 several times. I would be very scared to pull into someone's driveway of Route 23. I would be very scared to pull over in that little pathway, Route 23. And so that Wawa seems like a safe location for me as a black woman to pull in. She said that she wasn't safe. She said her father was a state trooper. She asked for a white shirt, a supervisor. She's scared. Guns are drawn. And then I find it very, it's always suspicious. Like, why is the audio never working? Why is it never working when the per, the officer first approaches the car? The audio's always working when the colleagues come in, the other officers, then the audio's working. The audio's never working. And what we needed to hear was how did the officer approach the car with the woman when he had his gun drawn? What was that encounter? That's what we need to hear. That's what we did not hear tonight. And so I am asking, I stand with my colleagues. I'm here in support of those on the main line because Montgomery County, we're here in Montgomery County. We drive in all of these territories. So I need to feel safe. My son's driving now. He needs to feel safe. My husband is a black man. He needs to feel safe. My daughter's about to turn 16 and she wants to drive. She needs to feel safe. And so I'm asking for an independent investigation. I'm asking that every panelist watch this video back to see your body language and how it was perceived by others in the room. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Reverend Martin. Jody, anyone else?
Yes, we have several people. Patricia LaRoche, I'm going to put her down. Anybody else who'd like to speak, you please raise your hand down so we can have a pewter. Patricia LaRoche is on screen.
Ms. LaRoche?
Yes, hi, how are you? Good evening, everyone. Trying to start that, can you see me? I don't know.
Yes.
The lighting is not that great. So I do apologize about that. But good evening, everyone. My name's Pat LaRoche and I am the president of the Women's Missionary Society of Bethel Amy Church of Ardmore. And I have, I attended Cabrini College. And on the main line has been scary for a very long time, from back in the eighties when I went to school and was involved in a situation of racial profiling. And it doesn't seem, listening to everything today, it doesn't seem like anything has been done or what has been done has not been sustainable to be able to any lasting changes. And I am touching and agreeing and equating pretty much with everyone that has spoken thus far that we really, really do need to have an independent investigation that will be intentional. And I want to stress the word intentional around discovering and leading for a true pathway forward for equity, inclusion and fairness when it comes to dealing with the police. We know about the trauma. We're in post George, in post George Floyd situation. And Breonna Taylor, I mean, God, we can list over 100 different incidents of things where police officers, you know, were basically elevating the situation and not necessarily taking a stance of de-escalating. I am a 56-year-old female. And if I, and if some, a police officer came to my car with a gun wanting to talk to me about a situation on how I was driving, believe me, I would have not put down the window nor would I have got out the car. And I would be on the phone calling everybody that I could think of to say what is happening. It is scary out here. And I think we just can't use the sight of the fact that we're human beings, right? Treat people the way you want to be treated. And as Reverend Let Martin, Tiffany Martin spoke about, the fact that looking at this, I've been on this since the very beginning of this commission. And watching everyone's faces, you do seem to be disengaged. Once in a while, somebody is writing something, but you're not making eye contact. Your head is down. And it's giving an impression that this isn't important to you. And I'm sure to the most of you, it probably is important. But it's that lang, that body language that you're putting out isn't really giving me confidence that this is something that is being taken seriously. So I hope that you would take this seriously. I hope that you continue to be engaged. Think about what everyone is saying. And it is being echoed across the board that we want an independent investigation around what has taken place, informing that independent committee to really look and evaluate and create some type of pathway for where it can start to be different result. The definition of the same. They is doing the same thing, the same way all the time. Okay, I'm sorry. Yet expecting in a different result. So I think we need to get off of that and start thinking about what else we can do to make a truth. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. LaRoche. Thank you, Ms. LaRoche. Ms. Collier, you're on. Ms. Collier? Ms. Collier? You may be muted. Or maybe a volume issue? She's not speaking.
And she's looking for her microphone.
Jody, can we go to someone else and maybe then come back to Ms. Collier?
So there's one more person that I have been trying to promote to a panelist for several minutes now. Elon Bernstein, who is, you have to like accept that.
Right, right.
Promotes money and they're not accepting it. So maybe their hands raised by this.
Okay.
And then that's it after Ms. Collier.
Ms. Collier, any luck with the, the volume? No, no.
It might be Zoom break, but everyone should be awake and listening and paying attention.
Please, please sit down. We're trying to get, Ms. Collier has the floor? Thank you.
So while Ms. Collier tries to figure that out, we now have Kelly Shippen also on.
Okay, why don't you promote Ms. Shippen, then we'll see if Ms. Collier can come back.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi, my name is Kelly Shippen. I was invited by Reverend James Pollard and Reverend Virginia Pollard of Zion Baptist Church of Ardmore. I, um, am not a resident of Lower Marion. However, I do work in the Lower Marion area and it is very disturbing what I witnessed this evening. Everyone there on the panel, not, um, each person, but they weren't engaged with what was being said by, uh, people of the NAACP, people of some of the local churches. And it just saddens me that it continues and it continues and it continues. Being a resident of Philadelphia, but I have to drive through the area to get to work. It saddened me and it scares me and it's very frightening. And it was actually, uh, one of the reasons I didn't want to participate and be there today. But to just to continue to be on the Zoom as opposed to being present in the presence and being in the area of which there is several officers, the trauma that I've seen and have witnessed on my own and that, um, my fellow African-Americans have witnessed, just to be in that atmosphere is always traumatizing. Hearing sirens is traumatizing because of the things that we experienced in the past. It just saddens me that it continues and I hope that there will be an internal investigation. And I want to thank Reverend Pollard and Ms. Virginia Pollard for allowing me, um, for, uh, making us aware. Everyone there at Zion Baptist Church of Ardmore. And I hope that there is again, an internal investigation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Collier. Ms. Collier? Ma'am, I, it, I think you're muted, but if, if you're not able to. No, it's not working.
One more person with a raised hand. Angie Jackson. But again, I have a problem promoting to panels.
Okay. Ms. Collier, if you can hear, um, maybe if, if, if we can't hear you tonight, maybe you could submit a written comment to our township secretary and we'll circulate it to all of the commissioners. Now we will have the benefit of your thoughts on this. Thank you, ma'am.
We now have Angie Jackson.
Ms. Jackson, okay. Ms. Jackson?
Hi, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, can you accurate your camera, please?
Yeah, I will. I'm actually in the cars. I have a bad connection, so let me just see. I don't know if you can see me, it's dark. Hi, uh, I'm here just in support. I grew up in Lower Marion and I'm a product of the eighties and nineties. And I have vivid memories of, uh, I'll say, being pleased. When, um, I did see the video, um, you know, as everyone else stated there, it was, it was pretty, um, it was traumatic. I, I can, um, I didn't see the fir, I didn't, I wasn't privy to the first part of the meeting with the video because as I said, my, my connection wasn't that good. I, um, one thing I want to say is I hope there's follow-up. I, I, I didn't hear if the police officer was remorseful. He felt as though he could have done anything different. And, um, one of the things, uh, that I, I remember growing up being taught by my grandmother who migrated up from the South for, you know, like many others for a better life and settled in Ardmore was that, you know, you treat people the way you want to be treated. It's as simple as that. I, I feel as though, um, trying to collect my thoughts without getting upset because, you know, being locked down and watching what happened with George Floyd. Um, I know we can all get numb. You can see it like throughout, you know, just tonight and just, uh, people getting back to the everyday, everyday life of things. But there's some people that can't get back to that every day because it's, 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 it's a thought. You know, what if, you know? I have two boys and when I'm in the car, I have gotten stopped with them. And I can't tell you how stressful I feel, even though I know that I have everything, my license, insurance. I don't have an issue, but it's that fear. It's that fear that something could happen, you know, watching someone like a Philando Pascal. And he did everything that he was supposed to do, but he still, he, 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 he still, his life wasn't spared. He just wasn't seen as human, the Trump, like the fear from the officer, whatever it is. But I just want to say that I, I echo what I've heard. I feel as though there should be independent, uh, you know, outside because you shouldn't police yourself. And I'm glad that there's so many different people representing because it feels good to not only have to fight. You know, uh, that other people understand it and they're standing with you and they want to change also because it starts with everybody seeing the problem, acknowledging it and moving forward together. Not just putting, putting at where we should actually put words, but actions to the words. And I just ask that you follow up. If the officer had any, was he remorseful? Was there any kind of acknowledgement on his part? I would be just curious. I'm sorry if I came late and it was said earlier, but that's a piece that I would like to know. And I just feel as though we all have to show a little bit of more, um, empathy. As I'm so happy to hear that word because that's what's missing. We want our children to, to know better. We as adults have to lead the way. I'm here, I grew up in Ardmore, I don't live in Ardmore now, but I had to come and support tonight because I know I lived through the eighties and nineties. Yes, it's gotten somewhat better, but you know, I remember, you know, a situation with, you know, a pastor, a pastor and what happened with him. And that I don't forget with, you know, with an officer. So if we're still dealing with things now, we, we still have a lot more work to do. So, thank you and, um, I look forward to a follow-up. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Jody, anyone else?
That is it for people.
Okay, we did receive written comment from people who aren't here from Muna Elshacks, Toby Hoffman, Michael Pollak, all whom expressed concern about the events of January to request that a thorough follow-up. So, um, their comments have been circulated to the board. At this point, we would normally have a response to public comment by the commissioners if they choose to. I'm gonna offer that opportunity, reminding everyone of the admonition we received earlier from our outside counsel that because we've been notified of the possible, there's actually the likelihood of litigation arising from this incident. And we have a policy of not commenting on matters going to litigation. I would urge commissioners to keep that in mind and making a decision whether you want to offer any public comments. So with that in mind, do we have anyone who feels the urge to give a public comment? Vice President Gavrin?
Thank you, Commissioner McCombe. Um, and as, as Commissioner McCombe said, we can't discuss the specifics of this situation up here due to the litigation. However, what I can, what I can do is say thank you to the over thirty people who spoke tonight and everyone else in this room who didn't speak but is here to show their support. As it's been said, I can't fully put myself in your shoes. I don't live with fear every day. But I can hear you. I can be empathetic. I can feel your hurt. I can feel your pain. And I can recognize that there's a problem with the relationship with our residents of color in this township. As, as a board, we can, we should and we must address this. There were a lot of great suggestions tonight from numerous people. Um, and, and we need to take these seriously. Um, and I, I thank you from the bottom of my, bottom of my heart for all of the comments, for your courage in coming up here and, and making comments and making suggestions to us. And please know that they were heard and, you know, they are taken seriously. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Gavrin. Mr. Stevenson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Like President, Vice President Gavrin said, um, we appreciate folks coming out. I would like to say that I would challenge everyone, thirty-some people spoke here about this police issue. The only way that you build community is consistent. And we need people to be consistently involved because this is a matter that we are, that we noticed and that we are addressing, that we need to address. But in order, but there are so many other things in our community that need, that people to be a part of. Someone said that, you know, that they want to run for commissioner. You should. People said there, there are commissioner boards, there are other things, whether school is zoning, where it's at. We need folks to be a part of those conversations on a consistent basis. Because the energy here that was here to bring a strong voice about an issue that needs to be brought to attention, I appreciate it more than you know. But it becomes lonely some days when there's one, two people back there with a voice. So we need people's voices, but we need people involved in, in these pieces to be a part of it. And I look forward to seeing folks show back up to be a part of those other conversations as well that affect our community. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Stevenson. President Finney, do you have, um?
Sure, thank you. If any other.
Anyone else? Yes, Mr. Kramer?
Thank you. I would, I would guess to, uh, what Commissioner Stevenson and, um, Vice President Gavrin said. And thank you, everybody, for coming and sitting here for hours in some cases to, to, to say what you said. I appreciate it so very much. I appreciate all the emails that I've gotten from people within my ward and outside of my ward. I love all the emails that so many people have sent to all of the commissioners on the commissioner distribution list. Like, keep it coming. We, we are listening. I don't know how we look from where you're sitting, but, um, we're listening and it's really important. This is, this is the process. With your engagement, we can do what's right. So, and, and I think it was Brian who said, you know, you keep us accountable and you do. And, um, I pre, we appreciate it. We will do our work behind closed doors and, um, I will only speak for myself. I know that I feel committed to, um, carrying your words with me, uh, when, when I do that work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer. Mr. Golda, favor.
I just want to echo, um, what my colleagues have said. And thank you all very much for coming here and sharing your views and your perceptions. And it's all very helpful, um, to us and to the whole community. Thank you.
Unless, here's, uh, Mr. Bernheim.
Thank you very much, Commissioner McCombe. And I'll be ever so brief. Had all intentions of adhering to the, um, you know, advice that we received from council and, and will do so. But wanted to note that we're all, you know, all of us have listened very, very carefully of what's been said here this evening. And I think that something that may have hit a chord with others such as myself is where we hear about being disengaged. Wish I knew the appropriate words that after I said them, you would be one hundred and ten percent convinced that's not the case. It is not just this evening that we have been dealing with this since it occurred. All of us saw the video that went out on, on social media immediately. All of us had reactions to that. All of us responded to, you know, our immediate constituents who sent us many, many emails asking questions. Some of those were coming up with a certain results before there could be the investigation. And yet we hear from everybody, let's get more investigations so we know what to do and have an appropriate response. All of that resonates with us. So I want to make sure that you understand the fact that we don't go point by point and address a lot that occurred here this evening to be able to come forth with responses is that that will occur within the process. It always has been something that this board has been careful to try to do, to listen to the community. Because the community comes forth on many, many occasions and educates us in a fashion that we may have overlooked something. But we also ask that while we listen to you, the police, listen to us and listen to this one sentence. We are really engaged. Please at least trust that fact that we will go forward as we have on many, many occasion and try in each and every circumstance, whatever it is, to ra, to raise the bar for this township. Because we do believe that it's not just that we're first class by the way statutes are written, but that we act in a first class matter. And that's what you expect and that's what we all intend to deliver. So thank you very much, Ms. Commissioner McCombe.
Thank you, Commissioner Bernheim. Mr. Zelloff?
Thank you, Commissioner McCombe. And I want to thank everybody for being here in person and online tonight. I also want to thank the, uh, police leadership for an exhaustive review in just nine days. And, and, and in what has been a transparent process. This board has read, this board has watched, this board tonight has listened. We have high standards in Lower Marion Township. We did a study with Major Bennett a number of years ago. We have extensive training that we, uh, take seriously and that we invest considerably in for our police department. We publicly post a lot of data about traffic stops. I encourage you to go to the website. It's easy to find. It includes a breakdown by race, by gender, by residency. This township's police department uses technology extensively, including body worn cameras, cameras in all police vehicles, the virtual reality that was referred to. Investigations of pursuit and investigations of use of force aren't optional, they're automatic. And it happened quickly. But continuous improvement in what we do in this township in policing and everything else is a cornerstone to how we think about services in the township. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zelloff. President Sinek?
Thank you, Commissioner McCombe. And thank you for the handling of, of, of tonight's meeting. Thank you all for being here and for your comments and your feedback. This is an important issue, um, as is evidenced by how my people are here tonight. We heard a lot of important comments, comments, uh, feedback and especially suggestions tonight. And as someone who spoke earlier said, we heard it with extraordinary eloquence and of course tremendous feeling. I recognize that we live in a fraught time where Black and Brown people nationwide fear harassment and violence by police. And I believe that is our responsibility as a township and as a community to create a place that is safe for all, that is equitable for all and where everyone is treated with respect. Now, to be fair, I also believe we have many hardworking, dedicated public servants in the men and women of Lower Marion Police Department who also share those goals as well as throughout the township. And I do think we have taken some steps towards transparency. The best thing to do when there are issues is to shine light on it. There are traffic stop statistics in this township published on our website. You've seen video tonight. This is not the end. It is a start. As Commissioner McCombe said earlier tonight, uh, the board was notified earlier today, uh, earlier this evening that the driver and passenger intend to file a lawsuit against the township. And due to that litigation, we have been advised by council not to discuss the specifics of this incident here tonight. That does not sit well with me. I am not a lawyer and I believe that the residents of Lower Marion deserve to see their elected representatives representing them. I think if we'd been able to do that tonight, uh, you would have seen that, that me and my colleagues, like you, were looking for answers. You would have seen that. I am proud of the work this board does. I think you would have been proud with the conversation we have had here tonight. I had hoped that you would see tonight how much every single one of us wants every aspect of this township to always live up to all of our ideals and all of our expectations. of this township to always live up to all of our ideals and all of our expectations. So, you know, what can I say to you? I appreciate you being here. I share Commissioner Stevenson's view. It is important to have this not just be one night. And I can say to you that my colleagues in the board and I have high expectations for the township and for Lower Marion Police Department, and we will be adamant about addressing any issue or any issues that are identified. Thank you very much for being here. And thank you also for my colleagues who spoke. Thank you, Commissioner McCombe.
Thank you. We're going to take a five-minute recess in the police committee because we have two other items having to do with personal matter and stop signs. So you're welcome to stay, but if you don't want to stay, that's, that's okay too. But we'll, we'll resume in just a couple of minutes with those two items.
Thank you. Yeah. Thank you. We're going to resume with our police committee hearing. The next items on the agenda are possible authorization of four-way stop intersections. Superintendent McGrath, I think the first one on my agenda is the intersection Knox Road and Sussex Road. So if you could give us a presentation on that.
Yes. Commissioners, the residents of Knox Road and surrounding side streets report safety concerns at the intersection of Knox Road and Sussex. In particular, they were concerned about pedestrian safety and the approaching speeds of vehicles on Knox Road. Knox Road is a through street with no controls at this intersection. Side street has the controls. Study of the intersection in the area shows there have been no crashes in the previous three years. We did a site study as well and found the corner side distances are sufficient on the approaches. So when we do these investigations, we base our recommendations on Penn Dot of warrants, see if they're satisfied in order to put in changing of regulations. The minimal warrants were not met, so as a staff, we just cannot make that recommendation. And it is for you to preview and decide if you want to put the regulation.
Thank you, Superintendent. We have seen this situation in the past where the warrants were not satisfied, but nevertheless, based on pretty overwhelming community support for particularly a four-way stop, have done so. And I think, I think for many of us, the deciding factor is if there is some incremental benefit and it does not make motorists and pedestrians less safe. There are certain things that really are not warranted, that the Penn Dot warrants aren't satisfied, and it actually is not a good idea to put in controls because they may give people a false sense of security. I don't understand this to be that case. So at this point, if we want to hear, I think the work Commissioner has some comments she'd like to make.
Yes, thank you.
Commissioner Kramer?
Thank you, Commissioner McCombe and Superintendent McGrath. I'd like to thank Officer Farrell and Sergeant Colflesh from the Traffic Safety Unit for all of their work on this request as well. I understand that the Traffic Safety Unit can't recommend a stop sign based on its own criteria that it needs to follow. But we did discuss the matter, and the Traffic Safety Unit officers agreed that they don't expect the installation to, to make the intersection less safe. And an important note is that one of the criteria, something that is not a criterion in the, in the Traffic Safety Unit guidelines is the consideration of proximity of the site in question to school bus stops. And what I did learn in the course of this work is that there are several bus stops right, right at that intersection and a high number of small kids living in the neighborhood. And I heard from many of the parents who are saying that they are feeling increasingly concerned for the safety of their children, both at bus stops and when they're outside because there are no sidewalks over there. Residents reached out to me this fall after what appears to be, have been a very harrowing event where a kindergartner was on his way to board a school bus for his very first day of school, and he was very nearly missed by a vehicle at that intersection, which was the event that prompted so many of the families to reach out and ask for a four-way stop sign. I was told by, by LMSD Transportation and the neighbors that there are at least two bus stops there. And I personally have had a close call at that intersection while on my bike. When, when you're on that, when you're on Sussex Road, it feels like it should have a four-way stop, but it doesn't. It just has a sign that says "oncoming traffic does not have a stop sign." And it can be very disorienting because, because it just seems like there should be a four-way stop sign there. So if you don't notice the sign saying the other, "traffic doesn't, doesn't stop," you can easily not realize that, that the traffic is not stopping and could get yourself into trouble. So I would just like to say that I appreciate the neighbors advocacy and participation, participation in the process. And I did include a letter of support that I emailed to all the commissioners with the signatures of over twenty families supporting this request. So, thank you very much. And I think some of them might be here tonight to speak as well.
Before, before we reach further, were any objections expressed to the installation of this control?
No. One person said, "I don't know if it's going to help," but, okay. But everybody else was overwhelmingly in support. And I did include notice of this in my newsletter to over 400 residents and didn't hear anything from them either.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Kramer. Are there any Commissioner comments or questions?
Yeah, I just have a question for Superintendent McGrath. I mean, so the criteria for installations of four-way stop signs, one of which is five or more reported crashes in a 12-month period, which first seems like an extraordinary level of, of crashes to, to, to warrant installation of signs. But also, I mean, just, maybe you can educate me, like, it doesn't seem forward-looking at all, right? I mean, like, so would, you, can traffic safety not go to an intersection and say, you know, before we actually have a crash, it looks like a place that, like, could be susceptible to a crash? I think, I think Commissioner Kramer called it harrowing, right? Harrowing to me means like, you know, people are taking efforts to avoid crashes that might otherwise happen. Like, like, you, maybe you could just educate me on the standard a little bit.
Yes, certainly. And I agree with you, just looking at that one warrant, that would seem to be fairly excessive before you think about it. And it isn't just one consideration when you do look at making recommendations. We're just pointing out that that warrant is not met, and it is a state-level warrant. It's not a local consideration or rule that we set. So, for instance, you noted, you know, if you see an issue with the geography of the, or topography even of the intersection, that needs to be addressed as well. There's many factors to look at, and they're taken into consideration.
Okay, thank you, Superintendent. Thank you, Commissioner McCombe.
Thank you, President Sinek. Any other Commissioner comments or questions? Do we have any public comment? Anybody in the room? Jody, anybody online?
No one has raised their voice on here.
Okay.
Oh, I have one person.
Okay.
Norman Osgrove. I'm going to put him in now.
Is it Osgrove?
Osgrove.
Osgrove.
Oh, there he is. Mr. Osgrove?
Hi. I just wanted to thank you guys for taking this up. I live at the corner of Knox and Sussex, and I, uh...
Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to resume with our Police Committee hearing. The next items on the agenda are possible authorization of four-way stop intersections. Superintendent McGrath, I think the first one on my agenda is the intersection Knox Road and Sussex Road. So if you could give us a presentation on that?
Yes. Commissioners, the residents of Knox Road and surrounding side streets report safety concerns at the intersection of Knox Road and Sussex. In particular, they were concerned about pedestrian safety and the approaching speeds of vehicles on Knox Road. Knox Road is a through street with no controls at this intersection. Side street has the controls. Study of the intersection in the area shows there have been no crashes in the previous three years. We did a site study as well and found the corner side distances are sufficient on the approaches. So when we do these investigations, we base our recommendations on PennDOT of warrants, see if they're satisfied in order to put in changing of regulations. The minimal warrants were not met, so as a staff, we just cannot make that recommendation. It is for you to preview and decide if you want to put the regulation out.
Thank you, Superintendent. We have seen this situation in the past where the warrants were not satisfied, but nevertheless, based on pretty overwhelming community support for particularly a four-way stop, have done so. And I think for many of us, the deciding factor is if there is some incremental benefit and it does not make motorists and pedestrians less safe. There are certain things that really are not warranted, the PennDOT warrants aren't satisfied, and it actually is not a good idea to put in controls because they may give people a false sense of security. I don't understand this to be that case. So at this point, if we want to hear, I think the Ward Commissioner has some comments she'd like to make?
Yes, thank you.
Commissioner Kramer?
Thank you, Commissioner McComb and Superintendent McGrath. I'd like to thank Officer Farrell and Sergeant Cole Flesch from the Traffic Safety Unit for all of their work on this request as well. I understand the Traffic Safety Unit can't recommend a stop sign based on its own criteria that it needs to follow, but we did discuss the matter and the Traffic Safety Unit officers agreed that they don't expect the installation to make the intersection less safe. And an important note is that one of the criteria, something that is not a criterion in the Traffic Safety Unit guidelines is the consideration of proximity of the site in question to school bus stops. And what I did learn in the course of this work is that there are several bus stops right at that intersection and a high number of small kids living in the neighborhood. And I heard from many of the parents who are saying that they are feeling increasingly concerned for the safety of their children, both at bus stops and when they're outside because there are no sidewalks over there. Residents reached out to me this fall after what appears to be have been a very harrowing event where a kindergartner was on his way to board a school bus for his very first day of school, and he was very nearly missed by a vehicle at that intersection, which was the event that prompted so many of the families to reach out and ask for a four-way stop sign. I was told by LMSD Transportation and the neighbors that there are at least two bus stops there, and I personally have had a close call at that intersection while on my bike. When you're on Sussex Road, it feels like it should have a four-way stop, but it doesn't. It just has a sign that says "oncoming traffic does not have a stop sign," and it can be very disorienting because it just seems like there should be a four-way stop sign there. So if you don't notice the sign saying the other traffic doesn't stop, you can easily not realize that the traffic is not stopping and could get yourself into trouble. So I would just like to say that I appreciate the neighbors' advocacy and participation in the process, and I did include a letter of support that I emailed to all the commissioners with the signatures of over 20 families supporting this request. So, thank you very much, and I think some of them might be here tonight to speak as well.
Before we reach out, were any objections expressed to the installation of this control?
No. One person said, "I don't know if it's going to help," but, okay. But everybody else was overwhelmingly in support. And I did include notice of this in my newsletter to over 400 residents and didn't hear anything from them either.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Kramer. Are there any Commissioner comments or questions?
Yeah, I just have a question for Superintendent McGrath. So the criteria for installations of four-way stop signs, one of which is five or more reported crashes in a 12-month period, which first seems like an extraordinary level of crashes to warrant installation sign. But also, maybe you can educate me, it doesn't seem forward-looking at all, right? So would, can traffic safety not go to an intersection and say, before we actually have a crash, it looks like a place that could be susceptible to a crash? I think Commissioner Kramer called it harrowing, right? Harrowing to me means like, you know, people are taking efforts to avoid crashes that might otherwise happen. Like, maybe you could just educate me on the standard a little bit?
Yes, certainly. And I agree with you, just looking at that one warrant, that would seem to be fairly excessive before you think about it. And it isn't just one consideration when you do look at making recommendations. We're just pointing out that that warrant is not met, and it is a state-level warrant. It's not a local consideration or rule that we set. So, for instance, you noted, you know, if you see an issue with the geography or topography even of the intersection, that needs to be addressed as well. There's many factors to look at, and they're taken into consideration.
Okay, thank you, Superintendent. Thank you, Commissioner McComb.
Thank you, President Sina. Any other Commissioner comments or questions? Do we have any public comment? Anybody in the room? Jody, anybody online?
No one has raised their vote on here.
Okay.
Oh, I have one person.
Okay.
Norman Osgroove. I'm going to put him in now.
Is it Osgroove?
Osgroove.
Osgroove.
Mr. Osgroove?
Hi. I just wanted to thank you guys for taking this up. I live at the corner of Knox and Sussex, and I just wanted to say thank you for considering this, and I hope that you vote in favor. It's a fairly, it may not be dangerous from the perspective of five crashes over the course of six months, but it seems like periodically we hear cars slam on their brakes and tires screeching as people try to avoid each other. And certainly the bus stops in the area, I was a witness to the incident that Commissioner Kramer mentioned. And one more thing on just that incident, if there hasn't already been agreed to, there's an intergovernmental agreement that needs to be signed to have cameras on the stop, the swing arm stops, stop-arm swing, I forget what they're called, the swing stop that the buses have. The camera was, I think, operational, but they can't get the video or they couldn't get the video because of that intergovernmental agreement. I would just hope that agreement is in place, and hopefully if it's not, it will be soon. I won't take up any more of your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Osgroove. Jody, anybody else?
No, there's none.
Okay. I'm going to put it in a motion. I move that we consider for recommendation Board of Commissioners authorizing the Township Secretary to advertise notice of intent to adopt an ordinance to amend the Code of Township of Lower Marion, Chapter 145 thereof entitled Vehicles and Traffic, Article 15, Schedule Section 145-108, Schedule 8, stop intersections by rescinding the two-way stop intersection Sussex Road and Knox Road and by establishing a four-way stop intersection at Sussex Road and Knox Road. Do I have a second? Thank you, Commissioner Kramer. All in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Madam Secretary, that passes unanimously. Superintendent, we'll take up the next one, which is a proposed intersectional controlled Spring Mill Road and Mount Pleasant Road.
Yes, this is, and I'll shorten this, and you'll understand in a minute why, but the residents in that area also reported safety concerns, particularly with the increase in the number of accidents at that intersection. The crash history, we did found a total of 13 crashes, all susceptible to the correction by a multi-way stop installation. Now, the reason we can cut to the chase here is it's a state road. So this was brought to the attention of PennDOT, and they did their study as well and are in complete agreement with it, and in fact have installed stop signs. So we need to put it into our code so that it can be enforced now. So we are making a recommendation that you pass an ordinance so that the regulation is adopted.
Thank you, Superintendent. Do we want to hear from the Ward Commissioner on this?
Oh, thank you. Well, it's a border between both Commissioner Gavin's and mine. Very pleased with it. I think it's a benefit to the neighborhood in terms of safety. It's a tricky long turn there on Spring Mill. It seems like it's straight, but it really isn't. So we, I am certain that Commissioner Gavin and I agree that this is a positive move in getting the two extra signs in, I think makes a good deal of sense. My only question that I was curious about is, was there a petition that was signed and circulated, or is this because it was a state road that there is a different level? I've never been in a situation like this where there wasn't direct board involvement, which the end is perfect, so I have no complaints, but it's more reactionary than I'm used to. So I was just curious about why the process was so different this time.
Because it is a state road, and actually we found that PennDOT kind of got ahead of us a little bit?
Ah, got it, yes.
And in regard to these petitions, they're not necessarily needed for stop signs, that's more for traffic calming issues. Those stop signs may be part of traffic calming discussion.
Yes.
That's required for the traffic calming policy we have in the nation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner O'Neill. Any other Commissioner comments or questions? Any public comment from the room?
Mogo, Haverford. I don't think this is on, but I'm pretty loud. I'm a middle child of seven. I just wanted to say thank you. I appreciate the stop sign, that was about it. And I even more so appreciate that there's the lights warning you prior to the stop sign, because if anybody, I regularly take that road from Haverford to Gladwin off to Spring Mill, and then I have family in West Conchi, Concha-Hocken. And so to make sure that people recognize, because if you're familiar with that road, you're used to just flying through, so I appreciate that there's the warning. Well, I guess I should tell PennDOT thank you for the lights before the stop sign, because I know this is actually, and I'm one of those people that maybe Anthony or Commissioner Stevenson was talking about, that regularly comes here. And no, not asking you to do any work, Todd. Yes, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mogo. Jody, we have anybody online?
I think I should just mention, don't give PennDOT too much thanks because they'll be taking those flashlights away. That is, stop this now when a new regulation goes in, two more people, and there's a big change, you know, at this particular intersection. You're not used to it, pay attention to the change. But it's temporary.
It's temporary.
It's temporary.
I believe it's about 16 days.
16 days?
Nobody online? Go ahead. Seeing no further public comment, I'll move that we consider for recommendation the Board of Commissioners authorizing the Township Secretary to advertise the notice of intent to adopt an ordinance to amend the Code of Township of Lower Marion, Chapter 145 thereof entitled Vehicles and Traffic, Article 15, Schedule Section 145-108, Schedule 8, stop intersections by establishing a four-way stop intersection at Spring Mill Road and Mount Pleasant Road. Do I have a second? Thank you, Commissioner O'Neill. All in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none, that passes unanimously. Superintendent, the next item on our agenda is a possible promotion of two police officers. So do you have a presentation for us on that? Sure. This is a night for technical issues.
Yes. So, in the past year, we've had a number of retirements in the police department. Captain Thomas, long-serving Officer Lower Marion, left us in August. We have been shorthanded Lieutenant for nearly two years. We had some promotions to backfill positions in December, but there were still remaining position open to Lieutenant with the promotion, with the recommendation, if you agree with the promotion to Lieutenant, to fill that position. Then, of course, opens a position at Sergeant. This would, by filling these positions, provide full coverage for the first time of two years for both the command level and supervisory on street coverage for patrol. So we are making the recommendation, the two people have been through the civil service process, one more recently for Lieutenant, and then a standing Sergeant in civil service process. First recommendation is for Sergeant Edward Sorama to be promoted to the rank of Lieutenant. Just a brief biography on him. Ed started the department in 2012. He's had, been a platoon investigator. He served in the field in operations. He's also been a field training officer. He then went to our detective unit and was an extremely valuable member of that unit, working with different task force and with other agencies in the general area and in the federal government as well. He's got a bachelor's or a bar's degree in psychology from Stockton College. Ed has, came through the entire evaluation and testing process with high marks. He has the skills and ability for this position, and we highly recommend him. The other individual is Officer Joshua Bills, and we are recommending his promotion to the rank of Sergeant. He joined the department in 2014 and was assigned as a patrol officer. He's been assigned also to the investigations twice during his career with us. He has a master's of science degree from West Chester University, my alma mater. He's had excellent reviews and evaluations over many years for the department, including notably receiving also two commendations, was named Officer of the Quarter in 2017, and again several years later, just last year, 2019, and was nominated as Officer of the Year for the entire police department in 2017. Has nine letters of appreciation from the public. And Josh has excellent skills as well as far and the respect of his fellow officers, often a go-to person when you're dealing with investigations and other police-related matters.
Thank you, Superintendent. They both seem eminently well-qualified. Are there any Commissioner comments or questions on this matter? Anybody in the room with any public comment on these promotions? Jody, anybody online?
I have one person, Alexandra O'Neill, and she's on screen now.
Okay. Ms. O'Neill?
Hi. Hello again. I'm in Wynwood, and I just had a question. I don't, I'm not familiar with these officers, so the question, my follow-up comment would be if either of those officers were present at the incident at Wawa? And if so, I would ask that they would be promoted until an outside investigation is complete. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. O'Neill? Do we want to, do we have any comment or response to that?
And we have one more.
Let's hear the other one, the other public comment, and then...
If you're asking for a response, I can give it. I just want to make sure that with the admonition you received earlier, whether you feel that applies to this or not.
I'm going to err on the side of caution and not really comment beyond what's been noted. Ms. O'Neill, we understand your issue and appreciate that, but we have been advised by council not to comment on anything relating to it other than what's already in the record. So thank you for that.
Okay, then I guess my request to the Board of Commissioners would be not to, if you're not going to share that information publicly, and I understand that position, but not to vote to promote anyone who may have been involved in that incident if you're not willing to tell us if they were involved in that incident or not. If they were there, I would be reaching out to all of you and saying that I don't think that they should be promoted. And I think if you still had a room full of people there, you may hear something similar. So thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is there anybody else with public comment?
I think, sorry, Commissioner McComb, I think, you know, there may be several of us who feel that simply saying whether two people were, you know, out of that entire police force were there or not, is probably an okay thing to do if Superintendent McGrath wants to respond.
Superintendent, if you...
Yes, I can respond. They were not working and they were not at that intersection.
Okay. Thank you.
We now have Sarah Atkins on.
Ms. Atkins, yes?
You answered my question. I was going to second what was just said, that if they were involved, I would ask that you not promote them until then, until an outside investigation has finished.
Okay, thank you.
Ross Nicholson with her hands up, but I am unable to promote her to events. Maybe her hands up, I'm asleep.
Okay. If there's no further public comment, I will move that we consider for recommendation the Board of Commissioners authorizing the promotion of Sergeant Ed Sorama to Lieutenant and Officer Joshua Bills to Sergeant from a list of candidates certified by the Civil Service Commission as recommended by the Superintendent of Police to become effective January 30, 2023. Do I have a second? Commissioner Churchill, seconds? Thank you very much. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Madam Secretary, that passes unanimously. And that concludes the business of the Police Committee. President Sina?
Thank you very much, Commissioner McComb. And we have one more committee meeting tonight before the Board of Commissioners meeting, and that's the Administrative and Human Resources Committee, and I call on its Chair, Commissioner Churchill.
Thank you very much. We have two items on our agenda. The first one is pretty much a, just paper, item from time to time. According to municipal and state regulations, we're able to destroy old information. And what I would do is offer a resolution, whereas the Pennsylvania Local Government Record Committee approved of Municipal Records Manual of December 16, 2008, and amended March 28, 2019, that sets forth schedules and procedures for the disposition of municipal records. And whereas in accordance to Act 428 of 1968, each individual act of disposition shall be approved by a resolution of the governing body of the municipality. Now therefore be resolved at the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Lower Marion in accordance with the above cited Municipal Records Manual hereby authorizes the disposition of the following public records. And I'm just going to read a, they include...
Commissioner Churchill, if I may, just because of late in this hour, and I humbly apologize for doing that, we can all see this.
Okay.
Spare you the reading.
Would you second?
I'll be glad.
Good, thank you. Is there any board comment? Any public comment? Seeing none, go to a vote. All those in favor, raise your hand, say aye. Those who oppose, any abstentions? That passes unanimously. The second item is a resolution appointing chairperson to the Township Vacancy Board. And the resolution goes resolved in that accordance to Article 5, Section 530 of the First Class Township Code, Miriam W. Phillips is appointed as chairperson to the Township's Vacancy Board for a one-year term, such term to expire January 2024. This board consists of the 14 members of the board and a registered voter of the township who shall be appointed by the Board of Commissioners at the Township's first meeting each calendar year or as soon after as practical, and who shall act as chairperson of the vacancy board. Do I have a second? And maybe members of the audience or some newer commissioners, would anyone like, Ernie, could you speak about Miriam Phillips?
Miriam has served in this position for quite some time. I'm not sure how many years, but it's a board that is only activated in the case of a vacancy and the board is unable to appoint a replacement. But Miriam has willingly served for a lot of years in this capacity.
And she was also Vice President of the Board of Commissioners before I came on board. That's a long time ago. Let's see, I read that out. Do I get a second? Good. The Commissioner comments, seeing none. Any public comments, seeing none. I will go for the vote. All those in favor, raise your hand, say aye. All those opposed, seeing none. Any abstentions, seeing none. Madam Secretary, that passes unanimously, and that concludes the business of this committee.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Churchill. With January 18, 2023, meeting of the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Lower Marion, please come to order. All rise, and pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Vermont.
Present.
Mr. Churchill.
Present.
Mr. Courtney.
Here.
Mr. Gavin.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Grimes.
Here.
Ms. S. Kramer.
Here.
Ms. G. Kramer. Mr. McComb.
Here.
Mr. McCann.
Here.
Ms. O'Neill.
Here.
Mr. Stevenson.
Present.
Mr. Welch.
Here.
Mr. Zello.
Here.
Mr. Sina.
Here.
Mr. President, we have a floor.
Thank you very much, Madam Secretary. I'm going to start by moving to postpone the approval of amendments until the February board meeting. Do you have a second? Thank you, Vice President Gavin. Any discussion? Public comment? None? Okay, all those in favor postponing? Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. A few announcements. The board met an executive session on January 11, 2023, and earlier this evening to receive reports from its professional staff regarding personnel matters and legal matters. And with that, we turn to public privilege of the floor. Now, this is the section of our meeting where members of the public may address the board on any non-agenda... this evening to receive reports from its professional staff regarding personnel matters and legal matters. And with that, we turn to public privilege of the floor. Now, this is the section of our meeting where members of the public may address the board on any non-agenda items, non-agenda items, or any other public matters in which the township has jurisdiction or authority. The hour is late. We're going to ask you to keep it to three minutes. Please use this podium here and introduce yourself at the beginning, even if you've done it before.
I just wanted to mention a few things, you know, that was said earlier today. We had one, one comment, or several comments about some civilian complaint review board or some sort of civilian board. October 28th, 2017, was a Board of Commissioners meeting where I asked for a civilian sort of review board. The response I got from the Board of Commissioners was that there is a civilian complaint review board. It's called the Board of Commissioners. I just want that to be out there where if some people may not agree with that, you know, because it's not really, you know, you're kind of connected to the police. It's not really independent. I also wanted to mention that, or at least, yeah, mention the, the right to no law and how Lower Marion implements it. I'm really, really satisfied with the way they're doing it now. You know, it's been several years, but I've been really happy that, and it's the communication and the, the ease has greatly improved over the past few years. That being said, I wanted to mention, one of the things I requested from the right to no law, and Commissioner Zello, you mentioned that the police published their traffic stop data. So, I requested the full traffic stop data that was used to create that PDF, and I just threw together a dashboard that's, you know, it's available. You can go to public.tablo.com and search for Lower Marion Police Stops 2021. And I have it broken down by race, by sex, by zip code, by police officer, by hour, by everything. And, you know, I just threw it together just thinking what could be out there. So, you know, you could take a look at it, but just as an example, you know, if you're, not if you, there were 32, 32% of the traffic stop data was a white male, 19.92% was black male, 24.33 was white female, and 15.51 was a black female. Now, keep in mind that this includes the entire Lower Marion, including City Avenue, the Skookle, if you pull over there, and all the other border roads, but those are the numbers. I also wanted to echo what Commissioner Stevenson said, that, you know, some of you are usually wrong and don't always agree with me. However, you know, you occasionally will say that, yeah, you do agree with me because that's because I'm here. It's, and it is a shame that it's very often only five people in the audience. You know, the commissioners listen, and like I said, sometimes you don't always take action on what you hear, but you always listen. And, you know, if there's no echo chamber, sometimes things can get changed. And I, you know, besides just being involved, you get to see how government works, or sometimes you may say how government doesn't work. But the only way you can make that decision for yourself is if you're here. And it doesn't always end at ten o'clock at night. Sometimes you're here till only nine. So, I would suggest and ask people, more people to show up because it's the only way to get things done here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shaberson.
Hi there. My wife and I were debating, we should go first. Kambi Zentamad from Bryn Mar. First of all, thank you for your unenviable and often thankless work. It, it is not unappreciated. I'm frankly here because I don't know where else to go. On behalf of many who don't know where else to go, we've addressed concerns with the school board and find it impervious, and actually looking to seek some clarification. I spoke at the school board meeting on October 17th. I submitted a letter to them. You can listen to that, and I'll actually, I will be submitting the same letter with some revisions, so that I'm not going to go through all of that again. I want to get to the essence of it, which is that I have witnessed, and others have witnessed, a decade of erosion of vision, judgment, and stewardship of the school board on a number of levels. Educationally, we homeschooled our daughter because of that. Financially, not only from the recent issues that were settled, but specifically in terms of community responsiveness and the pure irresponsibility of spending tens of millions of dollars for basically about 60 beneficiaries with the attempt to co-opt Oakwell and turn it into playing fields for, you know, literally a very small percentage of people. The, the cost-benefit ratio of that is irresponsible. And frankly, I've worked in enough different situations when that kind of imperviousness to feedback about the community impact, the natural impact, the financial irresponsibility, when that continues despite all that feedback, you begin to question hidden agendas and special interests, to be quite frank. So, the operative question is why is there so much imperviousness to all the feedback they have received, and why do they seem to operate with impunity? My question to you is, I think the community and the township at large could benefit from some clarification about the organizational relationships, and maybe a discourse and action on reexamining the organizational relationships, and maybe making some adjustments with regards to accountability, checks and balances regarding the decisions of the school board. There is a growing dissatisfaction, and there is some turnover going on in the next year with regards to membership, but there is grave concern, and I am only one of many who, who feel this way, and I don't really know if it's even within your purview, but I would, was trying to find a way to shape it so that it is in your purview, to stimulate dialogue, provide resources, provide clarification for those who are seeking it. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I also appreciate what...
If you could please introduce yourself again.
I'm sorry, Melanie Etamad from Bryn Mar. I understand now what one of the commissioners said. It's lonely sometimes, and I'm sorry that you don't have more of the participation of your community. I'm also a little bit embarrassed that this is actually my first commissioners meeting after 30 years. That being said, it's been a very heavy night, and you were, basically, we all spoke to you as if you're supposed to solve, you know, several hundred-year problem, and I'm sorry if I spoke to you in a disrespectful way. That was not my intention. I'm coming here because I don't really know who else to turn to. When I discuss with people, this sort of total shock and disbelief that there is an actual legitimate plan on the floor which seems to be moving forward, $23 million to accommodate an ancillary field for about 50 kids, I just absolutely don't know what to say. And when I talk to people and say, "Do you actually know that this is the plan?" People are sort of like, "Well, that couldn't really be real. I mean, I'm sure there's, I'm sure that's not going to go through. I'm sure there's somebody else who's handling that. Oh, I'm sure you must be mistaken." And I'm like, "No, I don't really think so. I think that's a real plan on the ground, and fees are being paid for attorneys, for engineers, to keep having these meetings. Expenditures are going out." And I don't really know where to turn because this seems so beyond belief, that in this day and age, when there is so much need, and talk about privilege, I mean, $23 million for an ancillary field? I just am to, I just don't know what to say. So, I'm just appealing, if there is any influence that the commissioners have, that there can be some sound, rational thinking applied to this, that you would please exert your influence. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Ben Driscoll. I live in Wynwood. I'm here to talk about VIL Number 6, which is the intersection improvement of Spring Mill Road and Montgomery Avenue, for which you are asking or demanding, which is the right word, $500,000 from the school district. When I was here last December and December before, Mr. Gavin responded saying that the construction of Black Rock Middle Schools created a burden on the neighbors, and that this fee is part to mitigate that burden. Thus, Mr. Gavin, this fee is an impact fee, and since it's for roadway improvements, it is a transportation impact fee. The MPC, Municipal Planning Code, does allow for imposition of an impact fee, but you have to set forth a service area. That is what the MPC requires. The transportation service area, without reading the whole thing, is an area that pursuant to the comprehensive plan and applicable zoning, has been designated by you as this is an area. You have done that. The Township Code 13511-11 has two such traffic impact areas. One is Rock Hill Road, and the other is City Avenue. Neither one encompasses this intersection I'm talking about, as this intersection is about six miles away from both of those regions. So, there is no basis in the MPC. There is no basis in your own code for this fee. So, as there is no basis, it's be is improper and cannot be enforced. So, I'm trying to understand why here it is, several years later, it is still a thing. And the only guess I can, because I don't know, is that there is a thought to be using this as a bargaining chip, which I hope is wrong, but in the absence of information, what do I have? I'm, I'm wondering if there's a thought that if the district somehow agrees to something regarding the fields, whatever they may be, that you would offer this as, "Fine, do what we're asking, and we will withdraw this $500,000 fee." Speculation on my part, but I don't know what else to do. I would say to you that if that is something you're thinking of doing, that is improper, because the underlying foundation of the fee is improper. So, to use it as a bargaining chip isn't of itself improper, again, if that's what you're going to do. My comment on this is, the proper rescission of this fee is a standalone issue. It needs to be rescinded. Please do so expeditiously. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room wish to take advantage of public privilege?
Jamie Mogul-Haverford, also in my capacity as President of League of Women Voters. I just want to say also to, to the nice couple, I'll be giving you my card and information to talk about the interplay of the role of different local governments. But with respect to the sunshine laws, and you seem frustrated, but I, as the public, am frustrated, because yes, it is true that you've named some of the reasons to have executive sessions. There does need to be more than just legal matters, and I looked this up just to be sure, with, and Todd, I'll follow, Commissioner Sinan, I will follow up and give you that information, that it is true that you need to have those executive sessions in terms of privilege and confidential matters, but something, for instance, legal, legal matters, if it's a pending case, the case docket should be listed, so that we know as taxpayers also and as residents, what is it that you are actually discussing. Legal matters is very vague, and it is not to be an attack on you, but just really to make sure that we have that consistent transparency that I know you're all attempting to give us. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room wish to take advantage of public privilege? Jody Dewey-Bame on line, who has raised her virtual hand.
We do. We have Kim Libens.
Okay.
So, I am neither in our room nor in Lower Marion, but in a, still in my hotel room in New Haven. And I thought I would just hang out for fun. I too am very concerned about the plans for Oakwell and the amount of money that our district has spent to put basically two fields for middle schools at the cost of close to $21 to $23 million. There's been very little transparency. The lack of transparency started under the last administration in, in terms of this issue. And so, I'm not 100% sure if Mr. Driscoll was, in terms of the $500,000 being referred to in terms of these fields, so I'm a little unclear about that, but that doesn't really matter. I urge, in whatever capacity this body of commissioners has, and maybe there are, there is no capacity, there has been so little transparency at the school board level, and there are many of us who you might not know, but we show up every week at the school board meetings, and it has gotten to the point where we are beating our heads against a wall. And this is now through two, three administrations, different, different iterations of school boards. We can't get an answer. We can't get correct finances. This was a bad decision made by Superintendent Copeland, and the district should not be required to live by such a bad decision when the majority in this township, not just parents, I'm a parent, and I do have a middle school there, but the majority of people do not support this. Our district never goes to referendum because if it did, this would not be supported. So, since I had tuned in for something else, and I stayed on, I thought I would echo what some other people have said in terms of frustration with our school district, and given the amount of taxpayer money that goes towards the school district, and the lack of transparency in how that is spent, when that's spent, the inability to get direct answers, it's really, really, really taken its toll on the morale, and I think on the effectiveness of our school district. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Jody, is there anyone else on line?
No one else on.
Okay, so, so this is the point where the board has the opportunity to respond to public privilege. I'll go first by, by taking, taking just a handful of these and then turn to my colleagues if they will indulge me. So, so first, you know, Mr. Abramson, you know, mentioned the, the lack of, of people in the, generally come to these meetings. Let me just say the following, it's from, you know, personal perspective. One of the reasons I ran for this position was on the idea that we're supposed to represent our constituents and absolve them of the need to actually come to these meetings, right? And it's, I, that's not to discourage participation and attendance, and I firmly believe in the democratic society, people should watch what their representatives are doing, and they should be paying attention. But, but hopefully, we are doing right by you, and, and, you know, the people who said, "I haven't been to a, a Board of Commissioners meeting before." You know, that can be a good thing if you, if, you know, the board's doing a good job, and you, you don't feel the need to come. Certainly, anyone who does come is listened to, and people who don't come are also listened to. And, and that's important, I think, in how we operate. The second is that there were a series of, of comments about the, about the school board. And let me just take the, the following, you know, kind of, 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 you know, indulge my wonkiness for, for a second. To me, there's a fascinating system of governance in, in the state of Pennsylvania, where we have two separate duly-elected governmental bodies, one of whom is for the school board, and represents the school district, and the other represents the township, and they are, they are disjointed. That's not how it was where, where I grew up. Where I grew up, the, the, you know, the town council oversaw the school. But that's not how it works here. We have two separate governmental authorities with separate taxing jurisdictions. The school district is elected at large and really has a different constituency than the commissioners, who are elected by wards, even though we all serve to represent the entire township. And we have different footprints in different jurisdictions. So, a couple of things about that. One is, I think it's fundamentally inappropriate to ask a elected board of, of, of officials to try and find some way to countermand outside their own jurisdiction what some other duly-elected board of, of, of officials are doing. They're doing what's in their lane, and if residents, you know, constituents don't agree with that, there are elections for those people. Just like if they don't agree what we're doing, there are elections for these people. For us, I guess, that's what these people meant. The second is, I'm on a roll. So, the, the second is, is the comment, and I, you know, I, you know, it is late, and I'll, I'll try to delegate here, but the quote was "hidden agendas and special interests." And, and let me say the following, which is, even when I disagree with the people who are, you know, the, the school board, people, you know, school directors, whether it's this administration or any previous administration, I never have any doubt that their intentions are genuine, just like everyone on this board, and that they are doing what they believe in the best interest of the township, right? And I firmly reject for any of them this idea of hidden agendas and special interests. I, I don't think that would describe any elected official in this township at any point in time in the, in the, you know, the more than a couple of decades that I have lived here. And so, you know, having... And so, you know, having said that, like, there are areas in which the footprint of the Board of Commissioners does overlap with the footprint of the school board. Like, we do land use stuff, and that has led to frictions and conflicts in the past, where when we are representing what we think is a township's interest with respect to land use, and the school district believes that's counter to the school district's interest in terms of land use, then, you know, that is, gets worked out intergovernmentally between them, or, you know, the, you know, people, you know, each group is responsible for, you know, what they're supposed to do. That's kind of how we're organized. I think it's important to support that organization. It leads to complications, and also leads to, I think, a lot of good governance. Lastly, Ms. Mogul, I think, you know, I'm grateful that you recognize that this board genuinely, you know, desires transparency, and, you know, I'm not an expert on what the Sunshine Law descriptions should be, but we will certainly adhere to what we're supposed to do. That is our goal. Okay, so that's my part. Any of my fellow colleagues, Commissioner Gilda Kramer.
Thank you. To those of you who are unhappy with our current school board, this year, there will be elections for five school board directors. If you don't like what's happening, run for office. Petition period starts on February 14th and runs through March 7th.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Courtney.
Thank you, President Sinai. I'm gonna try not to be too repetitive. I was hoping, Mr. Driscoll, when you were approaching, you were gonna do some fact-checking for us. I've been in many, involved in many conversations with regard to the middle school fields, the property sometimes called Oakwell. I'm opposed to the fields there, but I have never once heard this fact that they're only going to be used by 50 students. That's, I don't know where that's coming from. That strikes me as ridiculous. The other thing I will say with regard to Mr. Driscoll's comment is, no sitting school board director has ever brought up that impact fee to me. I don't know if it's come up with anyone else, but it's, I've been in several intergovernmental meetings, and no member of the school board has ever asked for that money back or brought it up as a potential problem in the way that you have. If they were, that'd be a conversation I would want to have. And I will just reiterate what the commissioners before me said, that if you don't like who's sitting up here, you don't like who's sitting over there in the school administration building, there's an election this year, and the way to hold your elected officials accountable isn't to ask us to police each other, but to just go ahead and vote for other people.
Hey, thank you very much, Commissioner Courtney. Commissioner Zelov.
Thank you, President Sinai. To Mr. Abramson, if you have truly collected all that data, I encourage you to share it with the police department, because they collect data, and it's on the website. I'm sure you've seen it. It sounds like you've done quite a bit more. I'm sure they'd be very interested in both looking it over to evaluate accuracy and to what it shows. And thank you for doing your research back to 2017. It won't surprise you, my views then are my views today. To concerns about Oakwell, it has been said recently up here, and it's worth saying again, there's an effort underway through negotiations with some of us on this board, and with some on the school board, and with our neighboring township of Haverford about use of the polo fields. That's not resolved by any means, but it's underway and may have a, may result in a less impactful use of Oakwell. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Zelov. Okay, Commissioner McCone.
Two quick comments. To Mr. Abramson, thank you for your work on that, and I also agree with your sentiments about participation. It's easy in this day and age for people to say, "I'm involved because I sent off an angry email, or I tweeted about something. I'm involved." No, that's not how things get done. Things get done because people participate. People, for example, go to the Police Minority Relations Committee, which has been in existence for 10 years. We meet regularly. We meet regularly, and we did a presentation last night, and people can ask the superintendent questions about police practice and procedure, and they get, there's a dialogue. But those are the people who are involved and participate. So thank you, because you have been a participant. Ms. Mogul, your question about Sunshine Act and things, what I announced at the beginning of the police committee was, we received notice of intent to file suit, that that means there hasn't been a complaint filed. A docket isn't assigned until a complaint is filed. In this case, it's probably going to be in the Eastern District of Pennsylvania. Once the complaint is filed, there's a docket assigned, that becomes matter of public record. But until that happens, it's not a public record.
Now we know the legal matter, you just got sorts of...
There you go.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner McCone. Vice President Gafford.
Thank you, President Sinai. Mr. Driscoll, thank you very much for your persistence on this issue. I appreciate you bringing this up. This is not an impact fee. This was not imposed on the school district. This was negotiated with yourself. There's no speculation needed. This was part of the negotiation when the new middle school was being built. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Vice President Gafford. Commissioner Grimes.
So the negative part, when you get around to this part of the table, is everyone has pretty much said what I was gonna say, but I'm just gonna take like 20 seconds anyway. Right, look. On the Oakwell situation, I share your concern about Oakwell. I'm opposed to the use of Oakwell for fields, but having said that personally, and others may be also, but having said that, as Commissioner Zelov said very eloquently, there are members of this board who've worked with members of the school board to try and find alternatives. But short of that, it is the school board's decision, and hopefully, there will be a compromise, because it will be regrettable, in my opinion, if it's turned into fields. But the township is kind of built up, and unless something else can be found, it's the school board's decision. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Grimes. Everyone else at that end of the day has given up. Okay. Okay, so I have, I forgot to read the written comments that were sent in under public privilege. Let me just go through them. We summarize these ones that are submitted by writing, but if you'd like to read the full text, they are available from the Township Secretary. So Michael Pollak from Ardmore wrote about health and safety issues related to the Anderson Avenue crosswalk at Station Road in the intersection of St. James Place and Montgomery Avenue. The Belmont Hills Fire Company Board of Directors and Brigade wrote in opposition to the proposed illuminated billboards along I-76 and within the township. Jessica Diamond wrote in opposition to the placement of billboards at the Gladwin Leaf Site in Corral Parcel. Thomas and Elizabeth Keach in Wynwood wrote in opposition to 25 mile-per-hour speed limit on Montgomery Avenue. Laura Goldenberg-Gepala-Kimwood wrote in opposition to the installation of athletic fields at Oakwell. Elizabeth Keach-Wynwood wrote in opposition to the installation of athletic fields at Oakwell. And Michael Pollak wrote to request change in Lower Marion Police Department term limits in minority representation for the police committee in outside review of the LMPD. So does any of my fellow commissioners wish to respond to any of these?
Just quickly to Mr. Pollak's comment about those two problematic intersections, one of which is Anderson Avenue and Station Road. I've talked with members of our planning department about that intersection. It sounds like we might get a review of it to see if the signage can be improved and the safety in general while the train station construction is going on. The other intersection, St. James and Montgomery, has certainly been discussed as problematic in civic associations and traffic impacted people turning left incorrectly. I'm not aware of any current plans, but the Ardmore Master Plan, I am told and I am excited that people soon see, will make recommendations on both of these areas. And my two cents, the less cars we put on Anderson and the more pedestrian-friendly we make that, the better Ardmore, in particular downtown Ardmore in general, will be.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Courtney. Commissioner Grimes.
Right. I want to thank the Board of the Belmont Hills Fire Company for their comments about opposing the billboard, proposed billboards in I-76. I will just say that some of you, I think my colleagues, may know Belmont Hills has primary responsibility for addressing accidents on the Skook Hill, and I hope if my colleagues have not yet had an opportunity to read their concerns, that you will do so. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Grimes. Commissioner McCann.
Thank you, President Sinai. Yeah, to follow up on Commissioner Grimes' point, we had comments circulated from the Belmont Hills Fire Company, and many of us were at the Belmont Hills Firehouse this morning to honor firefighter Thomas Royds, who was killed on the expressway while responding to an accident. A couple of other Belmont Hills firefighters were also seriously injured. So this is a very dangerous stretch of road, and the fire department in their email, they noted, "Heavily trafficked, dangerous highway." And they also pointed out a concern for distraction, which I think a very real factual issue with billboards on the expressway. And I also wanted to thank Jesse Diamond for her, our comments too about the billboard. She noted concerns about green space and billboard blight, and there's already a bunch of billboards down in the old Belmont area, so I certainly share Ms. Diamond's concerns as well.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner McCann. Commissioner Zelov.
Thank you, President Sinai, and I also want to thank not the fire service, but one fire company, Belmont Hills Volunteer Fire Company, because they said they are against billboards on I-76 as well as anywhere else within the township, and that is the issue. We may not have a choice, and it may be a trade-off, between a billboard on a local road in Lancaster Avenue or a billboard on I-76. A difficult issue that this board is wrestling with, but it's very important to note what the Belmont Hills Fire Company actually wrote. They said, "As well as anywhere within the township." Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Zelov. This underscores something that I shouldn't have said, which is, you clearly, this written, any written comment is circulated and read by the entire Board of Commissioners, so we do get all that. Anyone else? Okay. So now we're on to public comment, which is a section of our meeting where members of the public may address the board on any agenda items. And so the same three-minute rule applies. Anyone in the room wish to address the board on any agenda item? Okay, I see none. Jody, is there anyone online who wishes to address the board on any agenda item?
Yes, Mark Gillen and Herb Nell.
I'm from Haverford. I want to speak about Agenda Item 13, the ordinance to make edits to the zoning code, and I will speak later about the proposed edits, but at this point, I just want to speak generally about amending and editing the zoning code. The rewrite of our zoning code was a massive undertaking at many stakeholders. The community was very involved and very welcome. I attended a number of meetings personally, including a couple of opportunities to eat pizza and speak with staff. The target date for adoption was extended based on community input and a request for stress testing, and you all honored that request and process, because this is Lower Marion, and community engagement matters here. Even with that extension, however, at the hearing to adopt in January 2020, several issues remained. There were just some things that we, as a community, could not get to within the time available. At that meeting, staff outlined a few first steps to be taken following adoption, and some high priority next steps, including the SALDO, the creation of Education Institution Campus Plan requirements, an Ardmore Master Plan, a regional framework for City Avenue, and a sustainability plan. In addition to these high priority items, there were also a number of items that were below the line. Those were presented in a separate memo that evening, and those issues included historic preservation and housing affordability. During that zoning code rewrite and all the meetings, there were some dabbling in new historic preservation concepts. The concept of conservation districts was introduced. There was an initial plan to have design guidelines for historic resources and historic districts as appendices to the zoning code, and the concept of contributing and non-contributing elements was also introduced, but there was little to no discussion of these new terms. Our zoning code is not yet complete, and maybe it never will be. There are issues that are still to be considered, both high priority and some that are below the line. There is also some editing to be done, as you will hear later. Our code must be unambiguous and both internally and externally consistent. Words mean things, and they can't mean one thing at the PA or Montgomery County level and a different thing in Lower Marion. But a minor edit can't be substituted for a full discussion of historic preservation. I do applaud the efforts to get after sustainability and the Ardmore Master Plan and some other high priority items. It's now time to schedule public meetings for historic preservation and housing affordability. Public meetings to discuss issues and concepts with affected community members specifically invited. Please don't respond that you don't need public meetings about historic preservation, because you have advisory boards, as well as a staff historic preservation planner and historic architecture consultant. The representation of those advisory boards is not inclusive of the community the way it should be. Commissioner Grimes, when you took the position of chair of that committee, you promised we were going to get after historic. It's time. Put a target out there, do the backwards planning to create some time for community meetings, and I will bring the pizza. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Jody, is there anyone else online?
Nope.
Okay. Does any commissioner wish to respond to any of the comments? Commissioner Grimes.
In a few words, I thank Ms. Gillen for her comments, and I would say, as far as a review of the historic code, stay tuned, you probably won't have to wait too long.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Grimes. I forgot to read the written comment again, so I will summarize it. Michael Pollak from Ardmore wrote in opposition to authorizing the police department promotions. Any other commissioner wish to respond? I'm seeing none. We're on to the consent calendar. Does anyone want to remove any item from the consent calendar? Nope. I move that we approve the consent calendar as presented, and including the items from the earlier Finance Committee, Police Committee, and Administrative and Human Resources Committee meetings. Thank you, Vice President Gafford, for the second. Madam Secretary, we call the roll.
For the adoption of the consent calendar, Mr. Burman. Sorry. Mr. Churchill.
Yes.
Mr. Courtney.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Grimes.
Yes.
Ms. S. Kramer.
Yes.
Ms. G. Kramer.
Yes.
Mr. McCone.
Yes.
Ms. O'Neill.
Aye.
Mr. Stevenson.
Aye.
Mr. Whalen.
Yes.
Mr. Zello.
Aye.
Mr. Sinai.
Yes.
The consent calendar is duly adopted.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. We're now on to page 11 of the packet, which is a public hearing, adoption ordinances. Here we have a public hearing for adoption of ordinance for Chapter 155 zoning, various minor edits to several sections of the zoning code. And so we will start with our Director of Building and Planning, Chris Lesswing, for an explanation of what we have here.
Just following up on the PowerPoint.
Yep.
Oh, you may have to accept to be panelist.
Yeah, I don't know for sure.
Is it letting you promote to panelist?
Good evening. Tonight, what we're presenting at a public hearing is a series of about a half a dozen edits to the 2020 zoning code. When the zoning code was updated a couple of years ago, many of us admitted that it was a Herculean undertaking, and there would have to be some shaking out of the code. There was a big change in going forward, and as we've gone forward over the last couple of years, we've brought a series of batches of cleanups to that code, calibrations. And so it's hard to take a new code and completely impose it on the township, and we've seen minor typos and other edits that we've had to do. Each of these rounds of edits has gotten progressively a little bit more difficult, and what we're bringing forward tonight is round four of those edits. These are cleanups. These are things that we've noticed while using the code don't quite work as intended or are causing a number of variances. We don't get a lot of variances in the township, but there have been some issues, particularly with garages and how the code as written has been applying towards garages. So we're here to kind of correct that along the way. This has been, these edits have been reviewed by the Planning Commission. Their recommendations were forwarded to the Building and Planning Committee, further discussed at the Planning Committee. And I think we started off with about 10 or 11 of the edits. Couple were removed by Board of, by a couple commissioners, we're kicking those back to committee. Staff, upon receiving a letter from the Montgomery County Planning Commission, taking their advice, we'd like to also remove a couple more and bring those back for a little bit more workshopping, and bring those back in a couple months with the next addition. So tonight, we're going to focus on some other, the ones that we think are very tight and we can bring forward. We're going to remove the ones relating to frontages, projections, and awnings, and then keep moving forward. So the first that we have tonight are two definitions. One of the definitions relates to historic resource. I'm going to allow Greg Pritchard to explain that. And the other relates to commercial uses. In the zoning code, there's a definition for commercial uses. It says, "See, use is commercial." Well, that's a circular reference. We're going to remove that. That was unnecessary. The definition of historic resource is a little bit more involved and requires some background. I'm going to let Greg explain that a little bit more in depth.
Okay, thanks, Chris. Good evening, everyone, and I'll be as brief as possible, but there has been some confusion about this single-word change, and I wanted to give you some background. The proposed change is to correct a mistake that was put into the code where historic districts are referenced in the definition of historic resource. The word should be resource instead of district. Back when we first... Back when we first were editing the historic definitions within the code, we made a number of changes to the definition in the previous zoning code. We added the word structures. We removed a comma here and there. And we added a second sentence stating, unless otherwise specified, the boundaries of a historic resource are that of the parcel, which must contain at least one contributing element and may contain non-contributing elements. Somewhere along the line, again, we're not sure where that word resource became district, and we're just seeking to correct that error now. I could go into a lot more detail on this if you'd like, but that's the gist of it.
Okay, thank you Greg. Chris, anything more?
So, moving along, we'd like to focus on what we're calling Section 2 that's in your agenda, and this relates to fencing. There's a phrase in the fencing ordinance relating to a reference of a minor road. We find that this is confusing, and we'd like to strike that. We're not striking the actual height of the fence. The fence will still remain that, but it just won't apply along a minor road. We found it was a cross-reference. It's not necessary. We'd like to strike that. And this only relates to LDR-1 and LDR-2 districts. So these are estate fences. Estate fencing may still be up to six feet in height along the primary frontage in those areas. We feel that removing the reference to except along a minor road where the fencing shall be four feet in height doesn't work, so we'd like to have that removed. And then the second part of the fencing is deer fencing. And once again, keeping that, we're not changing the height that's permitted, we're just removing the reference to along a minor road. As I'm going along, if there are questions, I think we can do them section by section.
I have a question.
Commissioner Churchill.
A couple of years ago, Commissioner Rosenzweig was concerned about deer fencing that they did not have a flat surface, but they had spears. I don't, is it still lawful to have speared fencing?
I know that's always been a concern, and I think particularly, it actually relates back going back when we were talking about Oakwell earlier. There were always that fence that's along the former Haas property in that area where fence, that deer couldn't quite make that over. This that we have now, what we're proposing now doesn't address that. That would be something we need to look at separately.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks Commissioner Churchill. Commissioners off.
Thanks President Sinai. Chris, the county letter from December says that deer fencing height is proposed to be four feet. And they recommend seven to eight feet, but the code says eight feet. So did the county get it wrong in their?
The county got this one wrong. The county had some very good comments, and this one, I think it's just more of a comment from the county as opposed to really a review of the standard.
Deer fencing can go to eight feet.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you Commissioners off. Any other questions at this point for so far? Okay.
There's plenty more edits. The next edits are probably the easiest ones we have. As we're using the code, we've noticed a couple of times that we need to add a couple of words to say exactly what we wanted. In the table for the MDR-1 district, we need to add the words per unit in the, to clarify that 4,000-foot minimum is what's required per unit. That's something that was just left out. And then in the light industrial district, I think this is important. Right now, we have the lot area of 200 feet, square feet per unit. That is supposed to be 2,000 square feet per unit. We'd like to make that 2,000 square feet. And we didn't notice that, and we never really looked at the LI district and finally going through it and looking at it for something else, and we picked that up. Presentation's frozen a little bit. There we go. Great. The next one relates to the Bryn Mawr Village District. The Bryn Mawr Village District, being an older commercial area, has many properties that would be renovated, would be converted. And years ago, in the BMVD district, there was provision to encourage conversions of properties. And in that, if, when you have an existing property, it's somewhat grandfathered the parking that it came with. And this would allow properties to expand to other uses that might have different parking standards. And those properties were able to borrow up to 15 parking spaces off-site in our parking lots. Now that we've had that development in the area, we'd like to dial that back and bring that down from 15 to five. This seems to be much more reasonable, particularly with the parking capacity in Bryn Mawr. So this should read that changing a non-residential use in an existing building to another use or uses permitted in the Bryn Mawr Village District does not require additional onsite parking provided, that the new uses require more than five additional parking spaces of that required by the additional use. So there, that gives a flexibility to expand slightly. We do note that in the preamble, this was actually written a little bit incorrectly. It was a minor typo, that it stated that it was to a residential use. We needed to correct that to be a non-residential, to be another use.
The correction is the opposite of what you just said.
To a, to another use.
The intro says non-residential. It should be residential.
Correct.
The next sections of seven and eight deal with the wooded lot districts. We're not changing the requirements here, we're just reorganizing the language. The way the, the way the language was oriented, it didn't quite work with the, we mixed the tree planting requirements and the applicability. Here, we're going to separate them out. That's simply what we're doing. We're creating where everything was blended into Section B. We're separating B and strengthening Section C. So the applicability relates to, for the tree replacement, for the wooded lot district, that it applies to all parcels subject to subdivision and land development approval, and then parcel subject to minor grading permits and runoff and erosion control permits. And then in the tree replacement requirements, we're moving the sections that were above that, that related to where those were and putting those in New C. That way, it'll read, the replacement requirements or where the replacement requirements are supposed to be, and the wooded lot applicability is where the applicability should be. And then the next one deals with parking and garage. This is probably the most substantive piece that we're bringing forward this evening. We're kind of cleaning up this entire section. This is where we had a handful of variances that went to the zoning hearing board. We're cleaning that up to avoid some of the confusion. We're stating that with garage locations, it provided detached garages shall be located as requiring in their underlying zoning districts. This is treating a detached garage like an accessory building. And then attached garages for residential, it provided, shall comply with the following. Attached garages shall be located on the secondary facade where feasible. If the attached garage is along a primary front facade, it shall be stepped back a minimum of 20 feet. This is to encourage side-loading garages or rear garages. Garages with individual doorways shall be a maximum of 30% of the width of the facade. This is to prevent overly large garages from dominating the front of the house. And that corner or multiple frontage lot shall locate the attached garage on a secondary facade. And then what we're also adding is there have been a number of existing garages, houses that were built with front-loading garages. If somebody had previously converted one of these to an office under the current zoning, they couldn't convert it back to a garage. So not really changing the form. So we're going to add new language that building area previously used for a private garage, adding that word private, with an existing driveway access may be converted back to garage. No change is permitted to the existing footprint. So you can't expand it, but you can still bring it back to have that as a use. And then for sections 10 and 11. Oh, I'm sorry.
Do they, do they need a permit to do this conversion? Okay. Thank you.
Sections 10 and 11 deal with, just a clarification. Driveways are permitted, we're trying to reduce the width of a driveway in the front yard, and we needed to clarify that instead of relating it from the, at the property line from the carway. We're just replacing that language. It basically says what we meant it to be, but we needed to say from the carway. Then we're also adding bicycle parking requirements for institutions, particularly schools and hospitals, adding some short-term parking. We previously had done that for commercial uses and new multifamily residential uses, but we hadn't done that for institutional uses. So we're adding that in the chart on Table 871. Then we get into the section on non-conformities. This is the last two sections, Sections 12 and 13. I'd fielded a couple of questions from some Commissioners prior to the meeting concerning Section 12. I raised these with the Township Solicitor. He's suggesting that we just remove Section 12 tonight from being approved. He thinks it might need a little bit more workshopping, and we'll bring that one back. We want to take another look at that. But Section 13 deals with dimensionally non-conforming properties. What we wanted to make sure was, you're allowed to rebuild your property if it's an accident, it falls down, and you can expand it. If you deliberately remove that non-conformity, you can't put that non-conformity back and then expand it. That's what, that's what Article 13 is to clarify there, that you have the right to restore it. And, you know, there's always been a provision in zoning codes about destruction by acts of God, fire, other disasters. What we have seen is the potential for some of these non-conforming properties for not-so-scrupulous developers to come in, find one of these, raise them to the ground, and then take advantage of something that's already bigger than the surrounding property, and then maybe we'll use provisions to even expand that even further. We don't want people to be able to do that deliberately. That's really the summary of what we have tonight. I'm happy to answer any more.
Okay, so since Chris is asking for questions now, we'll do it now. But the, Chris, just one quick thing. So is Section 12 getting removed this evening?
That's the staff, that's the staff and Solicitor's suggestion.
Okay, okay. Commissioner Courtney.
Just same topic, just to clarify, the ability to reconstruct your property under Section 13 is not contingent on you being registered in Section 12.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you Commissioner Courtney. Commissioners Zella.
Thank you. Chris, registration of non-conforming uses, was that phrase in the prior code?
There's a phrase.
Or is that a new concept?
No, no, it's in, it's been in the previous code. It's actually in the current code, but it's optional. This, what's suggested in 12 would be, make it mandatory. I think we wanted to look at that a little bit further.
I agree with that. And what's in here says six months. That sounds short to me.
There was a lot of staff working on that.
I would suggest that considerably more time would be needed in order to accomplish that, what could be a huge task.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you Commissioners Zella. Any other Commissioners have questions for Chris? Okay, seeing none, we will go to public comment. Does anyone in the room wish to make public comment on this ordinance? Please come to the podium. And introduce yourselves and give three minutes for your comment.
My name's Gary Coysman. I live in Windwood Valley. Chris knows me well, unfortunately from my harassing him. But I am in favor of this ordinance passage because I was pushing for one of the items, which is I had a garage in my house, I changed it to an office, and I bought a car, and I want to put it in a garage. And then I found out that I can't. So it's been six months of discussing this with Chris, and I spoke to Commissioner Churchill about it. I live in Ernie's neighborhood, so almost all the houses there have a garage. So I just want to change it back to a garage. So I hope that you'll pass this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else in the room wish to comment on this ordinance? Hey Jody, do we have anyone online?
We do have Laura Gillen on.
Okay, if you could please promote her.
As I noted earlier, I believe that the subject of historic preservation deserves a complete review with significant community engagement. With regard to the specific ordinance under consideration now, I will strongly urge an amendment. In Section 1, definition of terms, the ordinance intends to amend the definition of historic resource to strike the word district and replace, and substitute the word resource in the last line. I would ask that the entire last line be struck. It's potentially confusing as written, but to amend it as proposed would codify a concept that has not been fully considered. It wasn't considered during the rewrite of the code and should not be adopted now by means of this edit. Staff believe this amendment is a correction, but they're referencing draft language from 2018, language that would significantly change the definition of historic resource. The proposed language is an attempt to codify an expanded purview that has been in practice but is without foundation. The zoning code language in question begins by defining historic resources as buildings, sites, structures, and objects. But with the proposed amendment, the next section would then read, "The boundaries of historic resource are that of the parcel." I know that our Township staff and Commissioners and the Historic Commission as an advisory body have regularly understood historic resource to mean the entire parcel listed by address at A180 of our code, but that's an inaccurate read of the code. A historic resource is a building, site, structure, or object, as stated in the first part of this definition, and is regularly, clearly, and consistently defined and described elsewhere in the same zoning chapter and elsewhere in other chapters of our code. The current legal limit of the Township's review of historic resources according to our code is the minimum essential setting or context in which the identified historic resource retains its historic integrity. On a parcel with and enumerated historic resource, the only other building, site, structures, or objects that could or should be reviewed and might be considered contributing elements are those that are within that minimum essential area of historic integrity. There is no authority in our current code to go beyond this limit all the way to the boundary of the parcel. Such an expansion of authority should only be considered holistically and with consistency across sections of the code as part of a much more complete and public review of the historic preservation. I asked staff if they might have any specific references in our existing code that define historic resources as parcels, and none has been provided. I've not been able to find any, but what I did find is the Pennsylvania Statewide Historic Preservation Office Guidelines for Certified Local Government Program. This guidance, by which Lower Marion is required to abide, also clearly consistently describes historic resources as building, site, structures, or objects. That guidance document uses the term properties in the legal context of ownership, but nowhere in that document does the word parcel even appear. Within Pennsylvania, a historic resource is not a parcel, and Lower Marion can't decide it is with this so-called minor edit. Please strike the last line of this definition completely, and please start scheduling meetings for a proper discussion of historic preservation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Jody, is there anyone else online?
There is none.
Does any Commissioner wish to respond to public comment? Okay. Commissioners off.
Seems to me that Ms. Gillen made a point that should be considered. I'd like to hear what the staff has to say about it.
Great.
Of course. The way that the Historical Commission reviews applications having to do with properties that are listed on the historic resource inventory is to consider not just changes to the historic house, historic building, historic object on the site, but to consider also changes on the property that may have a negative impact on that historic contributing element on the property. We think of those parcels, those properties, as similarly to the way we think of historic districts, where we have contributing elements, non-contributing elements, and maybe vacant parcels, where a Harb would consider the construction of a new structure for its appropriateness in the context of the district as a whole. We think of parcels the same way that are historically designated. If someone's building a garage, the Historical Commission wants to make sure that its context, its placement, its design in relation to the historic house, for example, that it might be adjacent to, is appropriate. And that's why we thought this was a good idea, and we still do.
So how would you respond with what Ms. Gillen said with regard to how the state defines historic resource? She says the state code is clear, and we can't deviate from that.
There's nothing to say we can't deviate from that. The state provides guidance for municipalities. We can define our own terms the way, the way that we think is most appropriate for our individual communities. So we have definitions for terms like demolition, for terms like contributing element and non-contributing element that we added to the zoning code in 2020. These are all things that are, I wouldn't say unique to Lower Marion, but they are tailored to unique circumstances and qualities of our township.
And our Solicitor is on, and so, you know, as a Solicitor, I presume the Solicitor has reviewed this language? Greg, I'm asking that of you.
I'm sorry?
I'm asking you that question.
Well, back in 2020, the Solicitor reviewed the entire zone. Well, back in 2020, the solicitor reviewed the entire zoning code revision.
No, but the language is proposed to change.
Well, it's, again, the concept remains the same from 2020. It's just the word was incorrect, and so we're fixing that word. And it's current-
Okay, Ms. Gillen's expanding her concern beyond the specific change. Got it. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Zelloff. Commissioner Grimes.
Yeah, so let me just respond to that briefly. So first, if I heard Ms. Gillen correctly, she said that the state, it was a guideline. It wasn't a rule, and I believe that's the case. So it's a guideline with the state, not a law. But in terms of what she's talking about and what Greg is talking about, we recently dealt, a few weeks ago, with the Henry Foundation, with a shed on that property. And the discussion set focused on, well, the shed may be non-contributing, but it's in the larger context on the property. There's a historic context. Or similarly, we designated St. Charles Seminary, where there might be a non-contributing building on the seminary property, but if you build anything on there, it could have a significant impact on the historic fabric of the property as a whole. And I think that's why we're, why the township, a long time ago, made a decision to designate by address and then have contributing and non-contributing rather than face with a situation where, well, this building is specifically designated, but you didn't designate this fallow property, which may be part of a historic landscape, but so you can build wherever you want on it, even though it's part of the larger context. Having said that, Commissioner Zelloff, if you and others would feel more comfortable, I would have no problem with deferring this part of the change till we have a chance to fully flesh this out, because I respect that others may want other opinions on this. So I would put that out there. Or to make sure we're correct.
Thank you, Commissioner Grimes. So before I turn this to Commissioner Waylon, I need to note that the hour is late. And what we advertised was changing the word district to changing to the word resource and not actually deleting the sentence. And it's like one wants to engage in, you know, a discussion about that. That seems like an issue for another meeting. This is a little, yeah, Commissioner Waylon.
As another commissioner earlier said, I need 30 seconds here or less. What we're talking about here is a distinction without a difference. The, you know, Ms. Gillen is referencing what described, a guideline that describes properties. Properties and parcels are not different under Pennsylvania law. The only way that we define properties or parcels under Pennsylvania law is through the legal meets and bounds that are recorded with the Recorder of Deeds of that county. So the only way to designate a property is by its legal meets and bounds. Logistically, that's also just the way the law works, because otherwise, you'd have to say, well, if you're looking at this at 12 o'clock, then up until the shadow goes, that's how far we're going to look. It's an absurdity and a slippery slope that you just don't need to go down. It's a distinction without a difference. The code change is completely correct.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Waylon. Anyone else? Okay. Okay, so I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'm going to move for the adoption of the ordinance. I'm going to follow up with some amendments, and I'm going to need Chris and Jody to both follow along to make sure I get all the amendments right, because I think they were not all on this list. So I'm going to start with the, it's the ordinance. I'm going to move that we adopt an ordinance to amend the Code of the Township of Lower Marion, Chapter 155 entitled Zoning, Article Two, to revise the definition of historic resource, add definitions for playhouse and treehouse, and remove the definition of commercial use to revise regulations for estate fences, to revise lot area requirements for residential units in MDR residential districts and LI light industrial districts, to revise the minimum ground floor area to be commercially occupied in the VCTC, LI, RHR, BMV, and CED districts, to revise the parking requirements for non-residential uses, change to another non-residential use in Bryn Mawr Village Districts.
And you want to remove those non-residential?
Wait, wait, we're going to get there for a second. Okay. And then I need to amend it. So to revise when the requirements of, you know, 15575 Wooded Lot Overlay District will apply to parcels of LDR, MDR, and I districts, to revise the tree replacement requirements in 15575 Wooded Lot Overlay District that's applied to parcels in LDR, MDR, and I districts, to revise the standard to the location of parking garages, to revise regulations pertaining to access to parking, and to insert a table setting forth the minimum bicycle parking requirements in all zoning districts, to require the Director of Building and Planning to identify and register non-conforming uses and structures, and to amend the regulations for the reconstruction of a dimensionally non-conforming residential building, accessory building, or accessory structure, except with the following changes. Okay? One is that in the preamble, the sixth line in the phrase, quote, "When a non-residential use is changed to another non-residential use," we will delete the second non-residential. So it actually says, "When a non-residential use is changed to another use." Okay, second, in Section One, delete the definitions of playhouse and treehouse. Third, Section Five, delete the entire section. Fourth, Section Nine, under 15584D3, the word private should be added before the word garages. Five, Section 13, under 1551012, change B to C to correct a typo. In Six, I guess Section 12 eliminated in its entirety.
Correct.
Okay. Did I leave anything out?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. So with the exception of those amendments I just read, this ordinance was authorized for advertisement at a stated meeting of the Board of Commissioners held October 19th, 2022, and duly advertised in the January 1st, 2023, and January 8th, 2023 additions of the Main Line Times in suburban. Do I have a second? Thank you, Commissioner McCall. Any commissioner discussion?
I just missed the middle part of that. Could you just repeat?
I'm going to make it into a paper airplane and throw it in here. Okay. Not a serious comment. Anyone else? Okay. Madam Secretary, I think we need a roll call bonus.
For the adoption of ordinance 4258, Mr. Burnham.
Aye.
Mr. Churchill.
Yes.
Mr. Courtney.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
Aye.
Mr. Grimes.
Yes.
Mr. S. Kramer. Ms. S. Kramer, sorry. Yes. Ms. G. Kramer.
Yes.
Mr. McCombe.
Yes.
Mr. McKeon.
Yes.
Ms. O'Neil.
Aye.
Mr. Stevenson.
Aye.
Mr. Waylon.
Yes.
Mr. Zelloff.
Aye.
Mr. Sinek.
Yes.
The ordinance is duly adopted.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Is there any unfinished business to come before this board? Is there any new business to come before this board? Any announcements? Okay, seeing none, we are adjourned.